Hello and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council's Post Agenda for Tuesday, February 25th, 2020. My name is Louise Chris and with us today is Sarah Pelk, our Sign Language Interpreter. At the request of Councilmember Ricky V. Burgess, there will be discussion on the following legislation. Bill 111, Resolution Adopting the Plan Submitted to the Electors of the City of Pittsburgh Entitled Restoring Pittsburgh Parks and the Parks Plans (Collectively, the Parks Plan) by the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy Prior to the November 5th, 2019 Municipal Election as the Official Parks Plan of the City of Pittsburgh and the City of Pittsburgh Parks Trust Fund. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good afternoon and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council Post Agenda for Tuesday, February 25th, 2020. We are glad to have so far joined with me Councilman Anthony Cockhill and Councilwoman Deborah Gross. And so we will ask the Clerk if she would read the title of the bill.
Bill 111, Resolution Adopting the Plan Submitted to the Electors of the City of Pittsburgh Entitled Restoring Pittsburgh Parks and the Parks Plan (Collectively, the Parks Plan) by the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy Prior to the November 5th, 2019 Municipal Election as the Official Parks Plan of the City of Pittsburgh and the City of Pittsburgh Parks Trust Fund.
Thank you very much. We're also joined by Councilman Bobby Wilson. And so we are, this is actually going to be very simple, and I'll just say a very simple opening statement that the voters of the City of Pittsburgh were given a choice to levy this park tax, and they did so by being shown a public, a plan that was composed with public and private input. And so I am a believer that since they voted for this tax increase with this plan in mind, that we should simply keep our promise to the voters and do what we promised them we would do. Erica, Councilwoman Erica Strausberger also has joined us. And so what I'm asking at this point now is our invited guests, those from the Parks Conservancy, would come to the table, Jane and her guests, and basically they will overview the plan to council following their detailed presentation. Then we will have a time for council to have an interrogative with them. And so there should be enough seats. If not, we should move over. All right, there should be enough seats for you. Jane, you may want to move down one, and then everyone can hopefully be seated. And then after the presentation, then we'll field questions. So first of all, it would be helpful if everyone, since we are being filmed, if everyone at the table would please announce your name and position to council.
Jane Miller, President and CEO of the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy.
Dan Booker, the Immediate Past Chair of the Board of the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy.
Mindy Watts, Interface Studio, a city planning firm based in Philadelphia.
Christopher Distasi, also with Interface Studio.
Clifford Levine, serving as Council to the Conservancy.
All right, thank you very much. And it's now in your hands.
Great, thank you. Dan Booker is going to go ahead and get started with his presentation.
Thank you, Councilman. I'm just doing a quick overview about the PPC for contextual purposes. I've been associated with the PPC for many years as a board member. For the last seven years, I was the Chairman of the Board of the PPC, and I'm currently the Immediate Past Chair. Our Board has, was, our organization was created in 1996, so 24 years ago, and began to work with the city under a partnership agreement with the city in 1998. Since that time, we have raised for investments in the parks approximately $130 million, and we've worked on 21 major capital projects. The most recent projects were the Allegheny Fountain and Promenade, which we're still working on in Allegheny Commons, the McKinley Park Project, which has been in multiple phases. We've done a couple of projects in McKinley Park, and then some other projects earlier, such as the Frick Environmental Center in Frick Park, the Garden, Entrance Garden at Highland Park, and Shenley Plaza in Oakland. We're currently active and working in 22 of the city's 165 parks, and we've hosted just in the past year 530 events in the parks, including, for example, the yoga class that's at Shenley Plaza that's on the screen here. We've had a summer camp in Frick Park for 500 campers. We planted 11,000 trees in various of the parks, and our education center, we've had 75, more than 7,500 kids participate in our educational programs in the last year. We champion greens, green infrastructure projects to offset stormwater and flooding problems. We are advocates for the parks. Unashamedly, we want more resources to the parks. That's what the referendum effort last year was all about. We do program four parks areas currently. In addition to the environmental center, we program the Shenley Plaza activities. We have a contract for programming, and last year for the first time programmed Mellon Square, and we're programming Allegheny Commons. So that's a rough idea of the kind of thing that we do. Our Board, since its inception, has included representatives of the city. In the early years, and we had two, I think Dan Honorato and Dan Cohen were council members who sat on our Board. Our bylaws contemplate that the mayor may appoint up to five city council members to serve on our Board, but none have been appointed. We do, however, have several, I think four, city administration representatives serving on the Board. The Chief of Staff, the Head of the Department of Public Works, the Head of the Department of Planning, and the Parks and Recreation. So currently Ross Chapman, Mike Gable, and Kinsey Casey, and before her, Guy Costa, served on our Board. In addition, they served actively, for example, Mike Gable was on our Strategic Planning Committee, which was the plan that we developed that included, among other things, the referendum effort past year, and included all of the work that Jane and these folks from Interface did to help us figure out what made sense from an equity point of view to fund the parks. We completed the strategic plan in 2016, and it's been a publicly available documents on our website, has been for the last four years. That was, that effort was led by our now Chairman, Mike Lyons, who, and as I said, Mike Gable and Guy Costa participated in that activity. On the screen, you'll see the four principal pillars of our strategic plan. Number one was advocacy for parks, to get more resources for the parks. We believed that the people of Pittsburgh want better parks, and that they want them badly enough that they were prepared to pay something to get better parks, and we think that's really what the initiative, ballot initiative, was about. We think that they voted, "We want better parks even if we have to pay a tax for it." And so we were very gratified by that outcome. Our strategic plan calls for us to focus on green infrastructure, using the parks as a place to catch stormwater before it overflows into our sewer system. Another pillar of our plan was to, was equity. I want to pause on that one a minute. When I first became Chairman, there was an awful lot of criticism of the Parks Conservancy for focusing on the parks in the East End, particularly the big parks. We, I mean, the Board as a whole, and then it reflected in our plan, we were under increasing pressure to begin doing work outside of the four regional parks. Our original charter was to focus on the regional parks, which get rad money. But other parks, like Mellon Park, and Arsenal Park, and McKinley Park, and Allegheny Commons, like Baxter Park, like South Side Park, those parks don't get any rad money. And we felt an obligation to begin to focus on those parks. And it was the neighborhood and community parks that were really the centerpiece of the plan that you're going to hear about from Jane and from the folks from Interface. And equity, really that pillar of the plan spoke to our desire to have a positive impact beyond the parks in the East End. And sustainability, of course, like every organization, we're concerned to be able to be here 20 years from now. In fact, we talked in terms of in the next 10 years, if we raised $130 million in our first 24 years, we'd like to raise $100 million in private money in our next 10 years. So as much money in half the time to supplement the money that the taxpayers of Pittsburgh have committed to put into parks. So that's our, that's an overview from the Board perspective. We recruited Jane to help us from Minneapolis to help us implement our strategic plan, and I'll turn it over to her to lead us through what the plan calls for. I should say one other thing. In every communication we had with voters, 125 community meetings, of which I went to a dozen or so, and other Board members went to others, in every piece of mail, in every petition circulation, we said, "Want to see where the money goes? See the plan." And we told people where they could see the plan. It was described in detail in each of the community meetings, and Jane can tell you more about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Burgess. Thank you, Dan. So with the strategic plan, that is really what drove the work of the organization. That was our guiding document. And we implemented as an organization two separate initiatives to make that happen. The first piece, which my understanding is what we're here to talk about today, is the Restoring Pittsburgh Parks Initiative, which we did in full partnership with the city, collecting all the data about the parks and the neighborhood conditions, educating and engaging Pittsburgh about the park conditions, also gathering the public's input about their priorities for park investments, and then taking all of that data and the public survey results and developing an equitable investment plan, which is known as the Parks Plan, for long-term park investments based on what the current funding is for parks, the park and community data, as well as the public's priorities for investments in parks. We then went back out to the public again to share all of the data that we had collected, the survey results, and the plan, and also gathering the public's feedback on that. Interface Studios was critical to that work from the very beginning in terms of working hundreds of hours, not only with Conservancy staff, but also city staff from DPW, Office of Management and Budget, Parks and Recreation, City Planning, to make sure that the work that was being done was in alignment with where the city departments were as well, where they're involved with parks. But I'm going to turn this over to Interface Studios to walk through the process we went through. And then before I do that, I also want to say the second initiative, which was again separate from organizational and funding perspective, was the campaign itself, was called the Pittsburgh Parks For All Campaign, and that campaign was specific for the referendum, but was separate funding and organizationally operated than the Restoring Pittsburgh Parks Initiative. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mindy and Chris with Interface Studios.
So just a little bit of background on who we are before we jump into the meat of the conversation today. Interface Studio, as I said, is a city planning firm based in Philadelphia. We do work sometimes at the citywide scale on big policy initiatives similar to restoring Pittsburgh parks. Some of the work we do is at the neighborhood or community scale. We did the Eco Innovation District Plan here in Pittsburgh a few years ago. And in the past couple of years, we've been doing a whole lot of planning in cities that have been thinking about reinvesting in their civic spaces and their public parks that have served local families for generations. We had a role in helping to shape Philadelphia Mayor Jim Kenny's rebuilding community infrastructure program, which is a once-in-a-generation investment in parks, playgrounds, rec centers, and libraries in Philadelphia. And that program, the budget is sort of dealing with hundreds of millions of dollars, and because of the size of the system and just the scope of the need, there was a sense from the outset that, you know, even if we want to, we could never afford to fix everything that's wrong with the system. And so we're going to have to figure out a way to be strategic and to use our resources for the best impact. And so it was through that work that we got introduced to the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy, and we have been working together since early 2018. So I just, you know, a little bit more context about where this kind of movement, this national movement, is coming from. I think Pittsburgh is, like many other cities, that have sort of these incredible historic park systems that are beloved by local residents, but that have faced decades of disinvestment due to shrinking budgets and kind of resources being pulled in a lot of different directions. And so cities across the country have started to ask the question, you know, "What would it take to reverse this trend?" And we looked, you know, we've been involved with some of these strategies that are listed on the slide, and others we've sort of used as references and, you know, places where we can learn from case studies of how other places are doing it. But I think that Pittsburgh is sort of the latest in this suite of programs and really has learned a lot of lessons along the way. And so we'll talk a little bit today about what's special about the local program and what we think makes it really solid. So, you know, really our charge is to kind of first understand what is the scale of the need, the scope of the problem. And we can tell you from the research that, you know, shrinking resources for park maintenance and upkeep have translated to a really incredible need across the system. So we have been able to put numbers to that. We know that there is at a minimum a $400 million capital program backlog. So that's, you know, just to fix what's existing in the parks and recreation facilities across the city would require a $400 million minimum. And on top of that, we've got a $13 million annual maintenance shortfall. And so that means that with every year that goes by, despite the valiant efforts of the Parks Maintenance Department and DPW and the Facilities Department, the Parks and Rec facilities are falling farther and farther behind. So our task was to sort of undertake this ambitious process to say, you know, "Let's look at the 165 sites in Pittsburgh's Parks and Recreation System and think about a new approach to investing in Pittsburgh's parks that would both achieve excellence in every park in every neighborhood and do so in a way that is equitable for all residents of the city." So just to give you a sense of how we sort of define those terms and what that means to us in the context of this program. Achieving excellence requires restoring parks and open spaces that have fallen into disrepair. It has to do with modernizing facilities that need updating to meet contemporary standards, and it has to do with maintaining all assets in a timely manner. So the day-to-day maintenance that makes people want to come to these places and keep coming back over time. On the equitable for all residents of the city side, I think there's an understanding from the outset that every park in every neighborhood should see improved maintenance and rehab of facilities. There's a sense that it, because of limited resources, we will need to prioritize comprehensive park transformation, so larger capital projects in communities that have the greatest need or have been historically underserved, and that we need to employ a transparent and data-driven process so that we, you know, can track our progress and understand how decisions are being made. So since we're not from here, and we weren't able to visit all 165 sites, I think we were able to see a sort of a cross-section of the Parks and Recreation facilities in the system, but we really had to rely heavily on local partners. I think there were moments in time when the staff at DPW were sort of like, this new temporary staff member, Mindy, is sort of annoying with all her questions about our parks, but truly it was hundreds of hours kind of around a table or on the telephone, just asking them to go site by site with us to understand what are the conditions in this park? Has the city made improvements recently? What would it take to bring this up to, you know, kind of a high level of quality? What do prior plans say about these places? What's in the capital budget for future years? And how much is being spent day-to-day on rehab and maintenance? So we really could not have done this work and had the foundation on which to build the plan without the really intensive dialogue with the Department of Public Works and also members of the Conservancy staff. So beyond understanding just the universe of sites, the Parks and Rec Centers, we also had to understand local values. And so we got sort of a small library of prior plans and studies that were handed to us, recent documents that we culled through to just understand, you know, what are the themes that Pittsburgh is grappling with, elected officials, local citizens? And so this kind of spaghetti diagram, as I call it, just sort of has an arc of those main themes that came up, as these are the things that are issues or topics of real interest and importance in the city today. And so we used these kind of key themes to understand, or to guide our initial research. So we sort of said, "Not only do we have to understand the parks, but we have to understand the communities in which these parks exist." So we did a whole bunch of mapping that sort of ties back to those, that spaghetti diagram and all the different key themes in the city. So we looked at, you know, environmental factors, we looked at demographic factors and so forth, and some of those maps are available, the ones that sort of wound up influencing the program are available on the website and the interactive map that was built. And then sort of the third big piece of inputs for this project is understanding the local public opinion and people's priorities in, you know, across the city. And so again, we really had to rely on our local partners here. So the Conservancy launched a Parks Listening Tour. The city attended with them at every meeting, so it was, as Dan said, more than 125 events. We think that the, over 10,000 people participated in meetings, and we had a survey that was taken by more than 3,400 residents. So the map shows really, you know, the geographic distribution across the city, and these tables or graphs show in blue the kind of breakdown of the survey respondents compared to green, the total Pittsburgh demographics overall. And so we were really pleased to see that we got those 3,400 people who took the survey were all different ages, their households, you know, were from all different income brackets. We had a demographic distribution that sort of tracked with the city overall, and we were able to connect with households that have children and those that do not. So we felt, you know, like we really, or Conservancy, I should say, we didn't have much to do with it except for crunching the data, but we were able to really understand the priorities of a good cross-section of the city. So our approach in crafting this strategy sort of started with an effort to integrate those four big inputs of, or data from these big four sources. So we analyzed past city budgets and the capital and operating budgets going forward, working closely with the Office of Management and Budget. We worked with, as Jane said, Department of Public Works with City Parks and with Department of City Planning to get that lay in the land and understand sort of what's on the table and what's the need in each of these places. We looked at the community data from multiple public data sources, and then the public opinion that came from the Parks Listening Tour. And really what we were trying to do through all of this was to kind of quantify and demonstrate, document the need across the system, build the case for investing in parks, and ultimately inform a strategy for action. So the program, you know, I just want to kind of say at the outset that I think sometimes with these programs, and certainly this is the case in Philadelphia, that the capital projects, sort of the big transformations of these parks wind up getting a lot of the attention because it's like the biggest splash that the program maybe offers. And in Philadelphia, the whole program is capital projects because of, you know, constraints from the funding source. But in this case, and I think this really speaks to Jane's expertise and experience, and also from the conversations with Department of Public Works, that this program from the outset would always going to have four budget categories. So in addition to capital projects, we're going to have maintenance. So it's not just about fixing things up, we need to make sure that we can sustain those improvements and maintain them over time. Rehab, which speaks to kind of the cyclical investment in some of the systems, like HVAC or roofing, so sidewalks, so some things that are maybe larger than the, are more expensive than the day-to-day maintenance activities, like picking up the trash and mowing, but are really need to be sort of scheduled and invested in over time to maintain the amenities and the high quality. The capital projects, which are the larger redesigns and re-imaginings of parks and recreation facilities, and then programming, who's going to be in the parks welcoming people and running programs for kids and families? And so in that park survey that I described earlier, we asked people, you know, "What matters most to you?" And by and large, you know, or loud and clear, I should say, the number one priority among Pittsburgh residents who took the survey was maintenance. And so second was rehab, third was capital projects, and fourth was programming. And so we used that data to really shape the budget and the kind of allocation of funds for this potential new source of money. So one thing that I just want to elaborate on, three out of those four buckets, so the maintenance, the rehab, and the programming are all, that accounts for 78% of the, you know, total resources that we're talking about in the Parks budget. And so those will be kind of deployed for improvements across the system. So citywide investments in maintenance, rehab, and programming will touch parks and rec centers in all neighborhoods across the city. The remaining 22% of the funds are for transformative improvements in areas that have been historically underserved. So the list, the prioritized list, that sort of speaks to certain parts of the city sooner than others, is really just about that one piece of the whole pie. So we're going to go through bucket by bucket, the maintenance, rehab, programming, and capital, but I just wanted to sort of frame that by saying that for, as we approached this work with kind of all of that as background, we really then had to understand, you know, what's the level and proportion of funding that should go to each of those categories? And within each of those categories, what types of activities that are maintenance-related? What types of activities that are rehab-related do Pittsburgh residents care about most, and how does that inform the budget as well? So we're going to take things a little bit out of order, but we know that this is the kind of the order of priority that Pittsburgh residents communicated through the survey. So first maintenance, then rehab, then capital, then programming. And this just shows the results from the survey. Everything in kind of green are things that people ranked first most important, or the lighter green is second, second most important. And so you can just sort of see in those, the bar graph, the share of the green that is for maintenance, the next line over is rehab, then capital improvements, and then programming. And I think it's not that people don't care about programming, they definitely do, but I think everybody recognizes that if our facilities are upgraded, then that supports improved programming as well. So all in all, the distribution of potential new resources to be spent in parks, 48% of that would go towards maintenance, nearly 50% of the whole, 25% to rehab projects, 22% to capital projects, as I mentioned, and 5% to programming. And part of this distribution reflects the, you know, local priorities and what they voted for in the survey, and then part of it had to be, you know, based on technical expertise that Jane brings, that Conservancy staff bring, and that other experts that we consulted with, just to understand sort of what's the order of magnitude of some of these costs. So some things are going to cost more than others, so we had to make sure that we were giving enough resources to each of these budget items to make, to really move the needle and make a difference. We'll take them a little bit out of the order. I'm going to talk about the three that are sort of citywide. I'm going to talk about the three that are sort of citywide investments in all parks and all neighborhoods, and then I'm going to pass it off to Chris, my colleague, to talk about the capital projects piece, which is maybe the most technical, and then we'll open it up for questions. So maintenance, as I said, this is kind of 48% of the new funds that would be spent in parks over six years per the program. This money represents a 20% increase in the existing maintenance budget for parks. And we just have listed here a few guiding principles to explain how we are thinking about the maintenance piece of the program. So first, just a belief that no matter where you live in Pittsburgh, your parks should be cared for with the same regularity and effort as parks in any other area. The second is that, given limited resources, priorities should be given to the maintenance activities that residents say are most important. And third, to facilitate improved maintenance practices and frequency according to public priorities, funds will be dedicated to hiring new maintenance and facility staff, purchasing the equipment necessary to do the work properly, and purchasing and implementing an asset management software system that is necessary to ensure that all parks are serviced equitably. So that piece of the puzzle is to just be able to track what we're doing and do what we're doing smarter and more efficiently going forward. So when we did that survey, the Parks Listening Tour Phase One survey, we sort of explained to people, what do we mean when we say maintenance? And we gave a bunch of categories that included waste pickup and paths and sidewalks and trail maintenance, playground maintenance, which could be painting the equipment or fixing safety surfaces so for minor repairs, tree care, which would include pruning and planting and mulching and so forth, landscape care, pool and spray park maintenance, mowing, and then there was sort of a handful of others. And they're listed here in the order of preference in terms of what people cared about most. And we cross-tabulated the data in a bunch of different ways, looking at, you know, income and demographics, and so really, there was really solid alignment that the top four were things that like, pretty much everybody said, these are all really important to us. So waste pickup, path and sidewalk management, or maintenance rather, playground, equipment, and tree care. So you can see the percentage on the right there about the number of people who said this is really important to us. So how will the funds be dedicated? Part of the work goes to, you know, improving practices, so understanding kind of how are things operating now within the Department of Public Works, and how can that be more efficient in terms of going forward? New equipment, we know that not only are the maintenance crews working with pretty old equipment, in some cases that's reaching the end of its lifespan, but if we have more staff in the field doing the work, then there will be a need for additional equipment. And then, yeah, the third item is the people power to be able to do all this extra maintenance work. And so the breakout of funds is listed here according to those three budget categories. And so this is, you know, trying to make a dent in that $13 million annual shortfall in terms of what's required for maintenance, just to meet the standards that DPW has already kind of adopted as their target. So for rehab, we'll follow a similar format. This is a quarter of the program budget, which represents a 23% increase over the last year's rehab budget. The capital and rehab budgets sort of fluctuate in Pittsburgh year to year, and so it's sort of hard to say this is what it is broadly, but over last, compared to last year, it's a 23% increase annually. So the guiding principles here are that funds should be distributed to establish consistently high-quality amenities in all parks across the system, and that, given limited resources, priorities should be given to repairing and restoring the categories of park amenities that residents prioritized in the survey. The most urgent repairs should be addressed on an ongoing basis, so the facilities team and the parks maintenance team sort of have a list of critical repairs, and so that gets updated, and those things would always sort of need to be considered and addressed efficiently or quickly. And then amenities in parks that are not scheduled to receive capital projects funded in the next few years. So there's a sense that parks that fall farther down the list in terms of the capital project list would be ones that would need to have the rehab so that they can maintain their level of quality until they work their way up the list for capital projects. So again, we gave people a kind of a suite of, a menu of rehab activities so they could understand what we meant, and they could tell us about their priorities. And so those things included, you know, park amenities like benches and pavilions, restrooms, again, trails and sidewalks, park lighting, playground, in this case it would be kind of a bigger upgrade, again, pools and spray parks, building improvements, so that has to do with some of the systems within the recreation facilities and so forth. And so again, we show here the kind of responses from the park survey, which said, you know, these are the people who said, these things are very important to me. And they don't add up to 100 because a lot of people said, you know what, at least five out of these 10 things are really important to me.
You speak more into the microphone.
Sure. Sorry. How's that? That's better. There's a few places where we don't have a percentage point on this, in this table, and that is because there are some things that are a little bit invisible to people who go to a park, right? So if you are enjoying your local rec center or your local playground, you're not necessarily thinking like, what's the plumbing under the surface that's supporting the spray ground, right? So things that wouldn't necessarily play well, but that are, on a survey, but that are really critically important to being able to turn on the splash pad or the fountain. And so there are a few additional things here that weren't on the survey, the critical repairs, the below-grade infrastructure operations facilities, and just a system-wide assessment to understand what is the level of need for each of these different amenity types and So, you know, again, it's pretty close, not quite, I can explain the discrepancies, but we have the people's preferences in the middle column, and on the right it shows sort of what is the proportion of the budget that would go to these different line items. So the system-wide assessment is really important to direct the work, just to have a better, more up-to-date understanding of sort of which HVAC systems are really toward the end of their lifespan, which places do we have a critical roofing need that must be addressed in the near term. So the assessment is important to guide the work. You'll see that the percentage allocated for paths and sidewalks is a little higher than park amenities, and that's just due to sort of the mileage of trails and sidewalks in the park system and the expense associated with repaving. The other one that's really sort of a standout there is building improvements, and that's just because the buildings are really complex and the improvements in those systems are really more costly than some of the onsite features of the parks. And also a sense here that those buildings, those rec centers, that is where city parks host much of their programming, by bringing up the quality of these rec facilities, we're supporting the programming piece of this program as well. So on programming, 5% of the program funds dedicated to the activities and the programs that, you know, keep kids busy in these parks, it's a 7% increase in programming budget over the six years. And the guiding principles for this one are that residents of all ages, especially children, families, and seniors who really rely on these spaces and use them heavily, should have access to fund safe educational program that improves local health and lifts up communities. That programming should be tailored to each of Pittsburgh's communities, so a sense that, you know, it's not a one-size-fits-all, we need to understand who's coming here, what do they like to do, and what are they interested in, and be able to meet their needs. And then, you know, recognition that quality programming requires investment in high-quality staff, modern facilities, partnerships to deliver programs, and resources to produce great programs. So this one has three budget categories. The first one is strategic planning and outreach. So in our discussions with Director Chapman, City Parks, there was sort of a, we stepped back for a minute, and he was like, you know what, we've never really done a outreach or a coordinated effort to understand, you know, what would folks like to see in the rec program, and it would really be great just to do some strategic planning so that we could kind of reconsider how we're doing our program delivery. Personnel, he said, one of the biggest constraints is that people want to have longer hours, they want the rec center to be open later, you know, on an extra day of the week, and we don't necessarily have the budget to be able to have our staff in those spaces to keep them open. And then, of course, new and improved programming. So really, it was the program, the types of programs is what the survey asked people about from the Parks Listening Tour, and so, you know, people were really interested in things for youth mostly, so programs for families, youth sports programming, youth non-sports programming, but in general, more than 50% of people said, I'd love to see programs of these types. So this is, yeah, I already said that stuff, we can skip. So now I'll pass it over to Chris about, to talk about the capital projects piece.
Sure. So the capital project piece, as Mindy mentioned earlier, comprises about 22% of the total parks budget under this system. It's probably the most technically complex side of this because our task was this idea that there should be dedicated funds to support comprehensive park transformations across the system, but that, given limited resources and capacity, parks should be scheduled using a transparent, data-driven process that can be replicated, that gives priority to parks that are located in communities with the greatest need, and in parks that are in poor condition and have not received significant investment in a long time. And that each park should receive an amount that will bring all parts of that park up to a high level of quality. And then the final form of those transformations should be determined in collaboration with the communities who use those parks. So the first step in this goes back to the beginning that Mindy had talked about, where we really looked at a lot of data on the city of Pittsburgh and tried to understand what are the data points that speak to other particular issues that Pittsburgh faces, and then also looking at previous plans and understanding what the metrics were and what the ideas were that bubbled to the surface across so many of the documents that support Pittsburgh. So then our task from there was to devise a methodology for ranking parks that satisfied those requirements while being data-driven and replicable. We arrived at six key measures by which we sought to prioritize parks. Poverty with an emphasis on racially concentrated areas of poverty. Youth and seniors, understanding that perhaps areas that are home to youth and seniors should receive a greater priority than others for these sorts of investments. Health, where are the areas where people suffer from poor health across Pittsburgh by several different metrics? And then neighborhood condition, where are the areas with the highest rates of violent crime and the highest rates of vacancy? And then finally, the other half of this, aside from the community data, is the data on parks themselves. So the conditions of parks, are they in good, excellent, good, fair, or poor condition? And then metric looking at past investment, over the past decade, what share of parks' total need has actually been met? So here's a, this table is a detailed account of all the data sets that fed into each of those metrics. A majority of these data sets are public, from the Census, from the CDC, from the Pittsburgh Police Department, from Carnegie Mellon and others. One of these data sets is a private data set that is from the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh, that data set's on vacancy and part by, on a parcel-by-parcel basis. And two of the data sets here, the ones on parks, are ones that we helped build ourselves in collaboration with DPW, the city, and the Conservancy. Those data sets are on the condition of the parks, and looking back at the budget, the share of each park's investment need that has been met since 2009. So those last two data sets on park, on the parks themselves, allowed us to get a look at, you know, where in Pittsburgh are parks in the best or worst condition, and where have parks received significant or little investment over time? So that comprises that parks' half of this prioritization methodology. The other half concerns which parks serve the highest-need communities. So all those other data sets on health, poverty, neighborhood conditions, youth and seniors, those seek to describe each park's community. And in seeking, in seeking to describe those communities, we settled on a geography, an area of study that is a widely-accepted standard, a national standard among parks advocates and policymakers, the 10-minute walk. That the area within a 10-minute walk of a park is that park's core community, understanding that, of course, some parks bring in folks from around the region even. We sought to focus in on the community that is most likely to use each park as its daily open space within a short walk, understanding that community as a park's core constituency. So then, to determine what, you know, the characteristics of that constituency was, we had to build those geographies. What is the space within a 10-minute walk of any given park? In order to do that, we start with a road network. We integrate in Pittsburgh's stairs and trails, excluding things like highways. We integrate in elevation, so we can understand very precisely what is the area within a 10-minute walk of any given park. And then, given that geography, using spatial analysis software, we can query all sorts of those data sets and say, you know, what falls within the data set, oh, sorry, what falls within the geography and what doesn't? For data sets such as vacancy and crime, it's very simple to say, you know, what falls in, what falls out. For population-based data, we use a methodology that estimates the percentage of folks within a larger geography, such as a census tract or a block group, that would live within the smallest census geography, a census block, in order to construct a detailed profile of the folks that live within that small area. And so what we end up with for each park is a sort of data dashboard describing the community that lives within a 10-minute walk. And this data becomes the basis for that community need half of the prioritization score. So the process is just very slightly different for larger parks, understanding that Pittsburgh has several very large parks in which the community on one side of the park might be very distinct from the community on the other, and then if we were to describe that as one community, if, say, one were a very high-poverty community and one were a very affluent community, they would average each other out, and the description of that park would be of a middle-income area. So in understanding that these large parks serve distinct areas, we split them into distinct, distinctly programmed areas, and sought to describe the multiple communities of each, and then prioritize those larger parks based on the highest-need community that they serve. So having described those two sides of the score, what happens from there is that we calculated a final investment priority score in which the community need measures and the park need measures comprise half each. Oh, and as a supplement to that information, in the database that I think is, everyone has, there are environmental overlay scores, understanding that the city of Pittsburgh has a range of environmental goals that we're seeking to accomplish. It's valuable information to be able to look at any of these parks and understand to what extent can they help serve those goals when they come up on the list? How can we make sure to integrate environmental design that helps accomplish those goals? So this here is a map that displays all of the parks in the system, from their highest score to their lowest score based on those equity measures. And there's some clear patterns that emerge as you look at the map. This next map displays each of those top 20 parks that show up on the list. And, you know, it's important to keep in mind that, as Mindy mentioned earlier, this section of the budget comprises about 22% of the total funds, and while this is a prioritized list, there's 78% of those funds that are intended to be distributed across the system on maintenance, rehabilitation, and programming that will serve all parks in the system. So from there, from understanding now we have a list, we have to understand what is the amount that each park should receive by the system. In order to determine this, we built a step-by-step methodology that accounts for things such as whether there are existing master plans and the cost of the next phase of those plans, estimates directly from DPW about what it would cost to bring every part of each park up to an excellent condition, in which, as Mindy mentioned, we sat down and talked about every park individually with those departments. The average cost for improving parks of a similar size, condition, and amenity mix, and then added costs for 20% to account for the fact that we're not just trying to bring up each part of the park to a high-level quality, we're trying to provide these parks with the resources to be transformed beyond just restoring elements. And soft costs, understanding that project management, design, and a public process will add costs to the capital elements of these projects. So the last step in this process was a sort of equity check. You know, we've gone through this whole process, we've scored these parks, we've looked at these data sets, we've provided them with budgeting. these data sets, we've provided them with budgeting numbers, but we wanted to take a step back and check whether we had accomplished the goal that we set out to accomplish. We said that these capital projects should focus first in historically underserved communities. And does the methodology pan out? Does it do that? And so we looked at the demographics as this, of the city as a whole, in which fifteen percent of families are living below the poverty line, and we looked at the first eighteen parks that are served and see that thirty-one percent of families that are served by those parks are living below the poverty line. The median income in the city is about forty-four thousand dollars. The median income of those communities served by these first eighteen parks is about thirty thousand dollars a year. And citywide, the non-white population is about thirty-four percent within the park, or the communities that these parks serve, that non-white population is about seventy percent. So we felt that coming to the end of the capital project section of this park, that this, you know, slightly under a quarter of the budget had accomplished our goal of serving an equity agenda.
So, we're near the end. I'll just say, thanks, that was a lot of charts and tables, so I just have two more pictures to share. But, you know, I think the main takeaways are that, you know, we hope that this program, this plan, Restoring Pittsburgh Parks, documents the need for additional resources to really upgrade and maintain the city's parks and recreation system and that it also provides, you know, a roadmap, proposing a coordinated, strategic, transparent, and equitable process for undertaking that work. And that, you know, while the document itself and all the slides from today are a little bit, you know, numbers-heavy and dry, I think this, we're talking about real places, we're talking about places that have served generations of Pittsburgh residents, and the opportunity to really affect change is very significant. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
So, any other thing from the panel? Jane? All right, so the way we'll do this is actually, Council President Smith should actually be sitting here, she's moved her seat. We're going to start with her and go straight around. Councilwoman Smith.
Thank you, thank you, Reverend. And I know we're going to have another post-agenda and a public hearing, we're working on scheduling those as well, and those will be, include more people, but is Director Gable, was he invited to this?
No, he was not. We can have the public people, but I thought we wanted to just sort of talk about the plan, so I did not bring, although...
So, well, when you're talking about a plan that includes our parks, I think the director of DPW should be included in the meeting, so I just want to say that. And so, I mean, if he can come up, that'd be great.
You can call him, you want the director of parks too?
It may be the new chief, yes, and the new chief, Casey.
Okay, so the people, it should be, pardon me?
Kinsey Casey.
Yes, if you would, see if they can come up while we're having this conversation.
Thank you, and I'll, I'll start while I'm waiting for the director, because I have some questions for them as well. I'll be honest, I, I don't know you, I know you, I've known your wife for many years, but I will say that I have just, I've not been a fan of this whole project, this whole process. I, I think it's not a big secret, everyone knows that, I'm still not a fan. The more we talk, the less I become a fan. I feel that, you know, I think everybody loves our, you know, there's so many people in the city, they love our parks. But you painted a picture as if our parks were in such deplorable condition. And when you're talking about this plan, for me, I know the mayor wants really great parks, I know we all want really great parks, and I think that's how, you know, this whole process started. But, for me, our parks were great, they were ranked number twenty-three in the country according to your own website for Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy. They rank our parks as number twenty-three. So when I think of the long list of things in the city of Pittsburgh that maybe are priorities to this residents of the city of Pittsburgh, and I don't expect you to know this because you're from Philadelphia, apparently there was not a firm in Pittsburgh that could do this work. So, I would just say that, for me, having number twenty-three in the parks, having our parks ranked number twenty-three, our bigger priority has been public safety. We cannot afford to fix our fire engines, we have aging equipment for EMS and police, our police contract is, is still pending, and there's some issues there. And there's just so many things I think that are, and even infrastructure, basic infrastructure needs, I think if residents had a chance to, and were asked those questions, they would want to fund those things versus parks that are ranked number twenty-three in the country. Not really a bad, a bad thing. I mean, they're actually really amazing. And what made them so amazing, when you talk about transforming them, that's what I worry about, you're going to transform them from public parks into very private parks with private assets, assets on them, like you have in Shenley Park. And Shenley Park does have a lot of private companies and other things that you have to pay for to enjoy. When I was young, growing up, and Shenley Park was the park I went to, everything was free. And that's not always the case right now. And so, for me, I'm going to be honest with you, if it, if it were totally after me, I would, I said, I, I wouldn't even want to, I wouldn't even want to collect these funds, but I know what a priority this is to the mayor's office, and so I'm trying to get to a place where I feel a little bit more comfortable. The only thing that makes me feel a little bit more comfortable is knowing that this money could be put to use geographically in areas that are in need. And so, I don't know how you came up with this list, I, I think it's amazing that no one talked to the council members that I've spoken to, yet we control the purse strings, we control these dollars, and we're going to control these dollars. And whether we collect these dollars or not will be up to council. We can open the account like the legislation calls for, but it will be up to us whether or not we collect those dollars. So I think it's amazing and fascinating that we were not even, no one even discussed us, what are our priorities in our areas? What, you know, what are our residents saying to us? Because if you're basing information off the meetings and a few surveys, I can tell you, I've attended those meetings, there were probably more your staff there than there were people from my neighborhoods. So when you tell me who's saying what in my neighborhoods, I can tell you what they're saying in my neighborhoods, and they actually, you can now see that our voters did not vote for this plan and nor, nor did Councilman Coghill's district vote for this. And I think there's a lot of buyer's remorse across the city right now as people are realizing what this plan was. And to many of us, it, it was a farce. I mean, it, from the beginning to the end, just to make it sound like our parks were in such, you know, horrible condition that we had to be having taxed to make them better than number twenty-three, so you're going to make them twenty? I mean, is that what we're aiming for, is that the goal? And I'd like to know what part of the disabled community, when you talk about walking to parks, what have you considered for the disabled community? And who did you talk to for that? Could you answer that question? One of you?
Um, I'm not sure that we did direct outreach, but I'm not sure, has the conservancy?
So as part of the park listening tour, we actually did do outreach to the disabled community. I, I can't tell you off the top of my head, but I know that we had a number of meetings intentionally reaching out to the disabled community. I can get that information to you at a later day, I don't have it for you right now.
Could you, could you get it later to this meeting? I'll wait for it.
Um, I will see if I can get it for this meeting.
Yeah, I'd like to have it for this meeting, because I'd like to know how you reached out to them, who actually attended, and what was done. Because when you talk about walking to a park, not all people can walk to a park. And so I want to know what you're doing to get people to parks, and once they get there, what is there for them to do in the park? So I think that those are some things that are important to me.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms., I'm sorry, I was a short. I'm sorry.
I was waiting for Director Gable to, as well. But I'd like to know, who, how did you distribute the surveys? How were they distributed?
Uh, the surveys were, Council, excuse me, Council President Cal Smith, they were distributed at the meetings, they were also distributed at, we did events like, we went to food banks, we went to children's activities, we had it up on our website as well, so we had it at all the meetings, plus at events where we did tabling. Again, I don't have all the full list of places that we did, but...
So your, your goal was to get it passed, and you made sure you went to places that would likely get it passed?
Our, our goal...
So it was more like a marketing?
Excuse me.
Question?
So, to me, it seems it was more of a marketing plan than it was an actual way to address a need in the city. To me, it looked like a cash cow for Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy and not necessarily a great opportunity for the city of Pittsburgh. I think because our parks are ranked number twenty-three, our DPW crew has done an amazing job with our parks over the years. While they were in Act Forty-seven and, and in transitions of different administrations, they had really held our parks together and have done amazing jobs. And so I, I don't want to say that our parks were in such bad condition that this was such a dire need. This was dire need and of dire importance to me, as the way I view it, for Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy, not necessarily for the city of Pittsburgh, and not necessarily for our parks. I know Councilwoman Rose has some stuff, I'm getting paged to step outside, so I'm just going to say I'm going to come back in for a second round.
Sure. So, as I promised, I'll go down, we are joined also by Councilman Kraus. We'll start with Bobby and go around the table. Councilwoman Wilson.
All right, thank you for coming today, and also thank you for your current investment and the past investments that you made in the city of Pittsburgh. It's my understanding that there is no agreement with any park that you currently have invested in that has been turned over to you? Is that correct? All the parks remain still in the city?
All of the parks, any involvement the conservancy has in any of the city parks, we have no ownership. And in fact, any work that we do becomes owned by the city. So any improvements we make, we do not retain any ownership, the city retains.
And any future improvements here, would they be city-owned or would they be...
They would continue to be city-owned.
Okay, thank you. So, I just want to clarify that, because, you know, I want to thank you for your past work. I know on the North Side, we recently have the Nice Fountain, and we met about Phase One, Two in the comments, so I'm looking forward to those improvements. And that's actually separate from this discussion, I think, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. So I just had a couple of questions that I, you know, going through the presentation, I had. So, you know, when I look at the, at the referendums for the mileage rate increase, and that would increase it yearly by ten million dollars, is that correct? Is that what we're going off of?
Yes, yes, estimates are about ten million a year.
And currently, what is our, what is the city currently investing in? Whether it's operating, capital improvement, what are we currently investing in right now with our parks and programming?
Last year was about forty-five million, and this year I think it's either forty-three or forty-six. I can get that for you.
Okay. So, I was looking through your presentation, and you put an equity lens on this. Is the city of Pittsburgh currently doing that with almost five times that amount? From your research, you said you were writing the DPW garages and everything.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think that the teams have a sense of where the critical repairs are and otherwise, and so there is, you know, some hard decisions that have to get made about, you know, we're going to kind of bump this one down the list that was scheduled for a repair because something else came up that's critical, so, you know, they have a work plan certainly, but I think that there is incredible range in the quality of these sites across the system. So some of them are absolutely in excellent condition, some of them are in very good condition, some of them really are not, and that requires hard decisions to be made. But that is a little bit more, I think, as things come up and it's a little bit of, you know, fighting fires, I think, in some cases, as I understand it.
Could I elaborate from the big picture of a board member who is not a professional parks manager? As I said, and we, at the Parks Conservancy, raised a hundred and thirty million dollars for capital projects over twenty years. All of that money went to, well, seventy-five percent of that money, or more, eighty percent perhaps, went to the four big parks, which are already getting RAG funding. In part because that's where private money that we could raise was willing to make investments in building an environmental center, in building Shenley Plaza, in improving the walled garden at Mullen Park, in, all of those were capital investments. And those investments dwarfed the capital investments made by the city itself out of its own funds in capital projects. So the amount, we're only talking in this prioritization piece of the plan about capital The purpose, and our purpose, was to find capital funds to go into largely the neighborhood parks, that we have a hard time raising capital money to support.
Yeah, thank you for that. And I just want to, just wanted to ask about the separate, different, well, you broke it up in the maintenance, rehab, programming, and then capital projects. Do we have numbers on how you would like to see that spent? If there, if this, if this plan, if this was the plan?
The parks plan itself, that I think you all have, that Councilmember Burgess put before you, has actually the allocation of resources. What, what was done with that plan was just to take the first six years, so it was easy for people to digest, but it is, in the plan itself, has dollar allocations in all four areas for the first six years.
So then the amount of investments that we would make in year one, for instance, on the different parks that are rated from one through twenty-five, I can't remember, what would that amount be, like, year one coming out?
Were you just talking capital?
Yeah, just capital, yeah. Because I see it's broken up.
Yep.
I mean...
One second.
I didn't know if we already had an estimate on what the, what the first...
So you're asking specifically about the capital projects in year one?
About four and a half million.
Yeah. Okay. And with that, capital projects that you're, that you, if this plan was used and you would implement, and you're describing how you are looking at equity and how you define equity, and you gave us, you know, your methodology on that. And I was looking at the, the way you looked at the census and how would, you're looking at ten, you know, ten-minute walk and all that other data. So that's currently looking at the parks we currently have and just going out. Is there a handle on if some of them are incorrectly placed? Like, would, if we had to do it over again, would we, would we look at where there's high density of poverty and say, this is where actually a park should be? Is there an opportunity, like, within your plan, where that fits in at all?
This plan really speaks to existing parks and playgrounds and rec. centers. We have done some mapping to sort of identify areas of the city where that, that aren't covered by a ten-minute walk shed, but I think that, you know, sort of the message from the residents who participated was, we need to maintain what we have. And so that is the focus of this plan. There has been extensive dialogue at the city that predates our involvement here with the open space PGH plan that sort of looked at each of the parks and said, you know, do people still live near this park and are people using this park? Or is there, and so I think there are some parks that have been flagged for, you know what, we're really going to not have active programming in this, in this park, we're going to kind of, it's right near a highway, nobody lives within walking distance, and so...
Yeah, and in fact, the capital plan itself, if you look at the capital plan, you will notice there are a number of parks that are being looked at together. We worked really closely with city planning based on the open space plan of, of places where there may be a very, very small tot lot that's relatively close to a larger park and to look at those parks in concert with each other, because they are in essence in the same neighborhood. And so you'll notice in the capital plan, there are a number of places where that is done to both be in concert with the open space plan that's also been done and our work with DPW and city planning to coordinate looking at those kinds of locations jointly.
Do we have a sense of how many jobs we created on the city side?
Um, so I know that, I mean, maintenance...
From a maintenance perspective, and again, the idea would be that we would be able to create an additional forty-five maintenance positions for facilities and maintaining the park system with, with the way the resources have been allocated in the plan.
Yeah. City jobs. Yeah, yeah, no, that's, yeah, that's why. Great. Okay, I'm good.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rossberger.
Thank you, thank you, Reverend Burgess, and thank you all for being here today and for your presentation. I, I have some comments, I have some questions, I shouldn't take too much more of your time here. I'll just say that the most, the most important factor for any kind of plan that the city council ultimately approves is, is equity. And, you know, looking at the, the factors that you considered for your capital projects... And, you know, looking at the, the factors that you considered for your capital projects portion of this seems to be, seems to be right on, I mean, the exact kind of factors that we should be looking at. I guess, a couple of questions. One, there's, there's a, there's a lot, there's a lot here that can, takes data into account, that you want to be data-driven. And from everything that I've read, everything I understand, the one downside to being, you know, laser-focused on data-driven results is that it doesn't always take public input into account. And yet, public input is, you know, are among the guiding principles of each of these categories. How do you, assuming that we are taking this as, as a guiding principle, making it our own, passing it in a way that makes sense for us, knowing what we know as council members representing the public, how would you recommend balancing those two? For instance, as other members have alluded to already and probably will after I speak, you know, we hear from a number of different sources, our resident, the residents that we represent, the community groups we represent, the partners we work with on the site, you know, we're, we know, we know the districts that we represent. And so if we're being data-driven, we're looking at that, how do you then balance that with, you know, year after year, day after, day-to-day feedback that we're hearing?
So through this process, the data was one, well, actually was two of the three legs of the stool. So the park data was one leg of the stool, the second was the community data, and then third leg of the stool was the public's priorities. And so the park listening tour that we held, the first round of park listening tour, was intended to get the public's feedback about what their priorities were, which is why we held so many meetings. We had 128 events across the city. It was also really important to us to make sure that we, the results from the survey represented the demographics of the city, which is why Interface Studio showed the geography of the city and where we heard from people, where they live in the city. But we also showed the data result, the survey results based on age, based on income, based on families with and without children, and race and ethnicity, to ensure that the people we heard from were represented, represented the demographics of the city of Pittsburgh. So the plan is not just about data, it's about data and the public's priorities for investments in all four areas.
I would just add that as projects move forward, you know, we haven't designed any of the actual improvements, and we won't be at the table for that. It will be the neighbors who would come to meetings to sort of help guide that and shape that. So I think that that's, you know, in some ways, as the program starts to roll out, you know, those are the meetings where some of that really important conversation and dialogue happens about, you know, if you have a tennis court, but kids really would rather play hockey or basketball, you know, now's the time that we can have that conversation and make that adjustment.
Yeah, that's another, that's another critical piece. It's not just that the public input happened at the front end, it's throughout the whole process that the public weighs in about how the dollars are spent.
If I could add, Councilwoman Rossberger, we think this plan provides an outstanding starting point for decisions to be made about specific projects. You'd be crazy not to say to the public in your districts, these are the priority projects identified based on all these criteria. Are we wrong about this? Plan has to reflect what the public wants. We think this does that. But, of course, you need to confirm that.
Yeah, I think that's exactly right. I mean, we, we, the starting point is being the key, the key phrase here. This, this can be a starting point off of which we can build and take not just public input in a static way, you know, one moment in time when this data, when, when the public input was collected, in the way that the Parks Conservancy chose to do it, but over time, year after year, with the information that we're also getting on, on a daily basis in our offices.
Yeah, I think...
And finding creative and equitable, equitable ways to reach out to the public on any given project, on any given...
It's not how we decided to do it. I think one of the early things in Mindy's presentation was it's the way San Francisco did it. It's the way Minneapolis did it. It's the way three, several other cities did it. So it's, it's not a out-of-the-blue plan. It's a methodology that is accepted and used in highly admired cities.
And I know that there are those at this table who would perhaps scoff at the idea, the premise, that we might borrow an idea from another city that isn't Pittsburgh, but I don't think there's anything wrong with that. I think that it's perfectly fine to borrow a city, borrow an idea from another city and make it our own with public input, with the knowledge that we have, the inherent knowledge that are, that the members of the public have. So that's a key part of what I'd like to see, is making sure that we are creative and equitable in the way that we gather that public input. And I just wonder why we at the table would consider reinventing the wheel when so much work has gone into something like this. To fully reinvent the wheel, we will, I mean, let's admit it, we don't have the ability, the resources, or the expertise to be able to do something as granular as this. So I, I think that if we are the ultimate, you know, if we ultimately control the purse strings, and this is part of a budget process that is a much more open budget process where members of the public get to weigh in on the capital budget over maybe a nine-month period rather than a one-month period or two-month period, and we really make that part of an open process, and parks are among the items that people can weigh in on, and council ultimately then passes the budget, that could be one way to go here. One other thing, you know, it's, as lawmakers, it's always a challenge to balance the here and now with several generations in the future. Given that this, this, this new tax that taxpayers will be paying is not just going to end after five years or 10 years, it will go on in perpetuity. I know it's hard to imagine, but what happens when we get to the point where we have spent money on rehabilitation and on capital projects and on maintenance? I mean, maintenance is ongoing, obviously, but at a certain point, our parks are going to be looking pretty good. So what have you learned from other cities when they get to that point, we just keep building more, I mean, I mean, putting more into programming? At a certain point, doesn't it sort of start to level off and, and there's just not as much need?
So the referendum itself only generates, I shouldn't say only, it generates $10 million a year. We know from the data of the condition of parks that maintenance alone is short $13 million a year. We also know that we have a $400 million minimum capital backlog in the system. So if we even took that $400 million and said we'd address the capital, current capital needs over 20-year period of time, a couple of things. One is, take the $400 million divided by 20, that means you'd need $20 million a year to do, to take care of all the current capital needs in 20 years. Add the $20 million plus the $13 million of maintenance needs, you need annually an additional $33 million, $33 million a year. We're only bringing in through the referendum an additional $10 million. So we are going to continue to fall behind, but not at the rate at which we are falling behind currently. So that's first and foremost. Secondly, you do a capital projects, every asset in a park system has a certain life cycle. Buildings generally are about 20 years, benches are about 10 years, and the list goes on and on. So all assets don't live into infinity, they all have life cycles, so you have to constantly be doing maintenance, capital rehab. And so both the additional dollars from the referendum are still not enough for what the needs of the existing system are, plus the ongoing maintenance, capital rehab that will always be in the existing system of parks that are needed.
So do you have a sense of, have you done the calculation? If you haven't, it's okay, but if, have you done the calculation of what year we will actually kind of have caught up and not be, fall as behind as we are? And be working on just that sort of cycling back to the first park again and...
Well, again, I think, you know, our goal as the Conservancy through this process has always been to match the referendum dollars. So on average, over the last 10 years, the Conservancy has raised $7.8 million a year, close to $8 million a year annually, which is why we feel pretty confident that we will be able to match $10 million a year. And so that will bring $20 million to the park system if we're able to do that. That is still short, so this catch-up, the issue will be, we're not going to fall as far behind as we are now. As the city economically continues to strengthen, you know, the hope would be also that more resources are available, available in the city's general fund to contribute not just to parks, but other amenities also in the cities, the infrastructure, streets, those kinds of things. But, you know, at a minimum, to get through the entire system, given $10 million in additional revenue through the referendum and the Conservancy's match, if we are able to continue to do what we've been doing, I think it's going to take at least 25 years to get to a place where we've been able to really overwhelmingly address the whole system. Not bring everything up to, you know, this level, but up to an even quality of probably really good condition.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. And, you know, I'll just say that at some point, we will get to that point. It's not going to be in the near future, but we will get to that point, and because money is fungible, at least taxpayer funding that we get as the city is fungible, that $10 million at a certain point could be then diverted to paving and potholes, or other maintenance, or affordable housing, or whatever it needs to be diverted to, and if, if we get to the point where, you know, we're in a pretty good position with our parks. The last priority, I don't need necessarily a response, but I just want to say that it's really important to me that the majority of this money goes to bolstering what the city is already doing, hiring more city staff, empowering the, the staff that we have on the ground to increase our programming, to increase our capital projects, to be doing what we're doing currently, but just doing it better. So I'll just say that. Thank you. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you very much, Mr. O'Connor, who joined us. You're next.
Sorry, I was in and out. Okay, so the foundation money, we have none yet, is that correct?
Okay. I talked.
Jane.
Excuse me.
We've raised no money to match at this point, right?
The way private fundraising works is we need to know what it is we're raising money for, for a project or a program.
So I guess when we pitched this, I remember being at this table, there was going to be money regardless. We didn't get into the details. So we raised the funds, and, and I work with you guys all the time, so I know you guys do a good job. I just, so I can see where we are in this process. So we said we're going to, the tax passed, and we're going to get matching funds. So the tax has passed, but we have no matching funds at this point. So you're saying next year, when the funds come in through the tax, we're going to get an $8 million check?
No.
Okay.
Since Councilmember O'Connor and, and we've worked in, in almost every district in the city...
Right.
Is that it's project-based, it's program-based. So once we know what the programs and projects will be, then we can, we will work hand-in-hand with the city to say, okay, these projects and these programs are what we're going to be focusing on the next two or three years. We raise money for those projects and programs.
But that's if you get the money for those projects. Is that correct? So let's say, and, and again, I'm, I'm just trying to go through the detail. I think that the devil's going to be in the details when we figure this out. So, okay, let's say we give $1 million to, who does, Landforce does work. So there would be no matching funds for a group like that that hires kids in the summer to maintain our parks because it's not through the Parks Conservancy? Or would you actually go out and get, would people be willing to support and match funds from this pot for other organizations? That's maybe, maybe that's my question. And it's hard to answer.
I'm sorry, I find the question a little confusing, I'm sorry if I'm not understanding that, but...
No, that's fine. So if you, if you're not, maybe I'll say it this way, if you're not part of that project, whatever this council decides where that money goes, so a playground in, you know, Rev's district, a playground in Eric's district, wherever, but if you're not part of that project, are the foundations still willing, or partners still willing to match funds for that project? Because I, I basically thought it was a match-for-match, okay, we got $8 million in the tax, we're also going to get $8 million to do other things.
What, 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 anytime we raise money, again, is for a pro, a specific project, or if it's a specific program. So until the decision is made about what the projects and programs will be, we can't just go out and make, okay, give us $8 million. It has to be for a specific project or, and/or program.
So we have a specific project to teach 20 kids, you know, how to maintain a park, whatever it might be. If you do not get that project, is there still matching funds for that? Like, let's say we partnered with somebody else. And I, I'm not saying, I'm, I'm just using example, that if there's a partnership with somebody else, are you saying that there's, it's unlikely that we're going to get matching funds for whatever that project is? Like, education in the parks, but it doesn't go through...
Can I just, for instance, first T program at Shenley?
Right.
And I would assume there's outside money that helps support that program.
There is.
So nothing that we would do here would preclude other groups supporting...
But, but, but you, but the tax didn't come from that. The tax was pushed so that the funds that we brought in would be matched. That was stated at this table. It wasn't stated necessarily by Jane, but it was stated by Rev's people at this table.
So there would be a list of projects and priorities that would come out, some sort of joint plan with the Conservancy and council. Well, that would be the goal.
Right. Whatever the plan is, yeah.
Right. There's a plan, but it's not a take-it-or-leave-it plan, it's a plan that is obviously council input. And then from there, there would be identifiable projects that would include capital maintenance, et cetera.
Right.
And from that, with those identifiable, identifiable projects, the goal would be then to start raising money. And like anything, where you raised for a college campus building or for anything, it's good to say, look at this, here's our plan, new tennis courts, new, whatever it is, this is what we're going to do.
So who's going to go and raise the money? If the Parks Conservancy doesn't get a contract, who's going to raise the matching funds? Because it was stated at this table, prior to this, that we would get matching funds from foundations to match the plan. And I, I'm not saying, you said it, other people had said it, that we are going to get out, actually, it was the administration that said, we are going to get matching funds, dollar for dollar, for this plan. So regardless of the actual project, that is my question.
Sure.
So if the Parks Conservancy doesn't get the actual plan, like, let's say it's educating kids, or whatever it might be, if they don't get it, then we're saying that that organization that got it might not be able to get matching funds.
So let me help with this, let me put on my other hat, my old hat.
Well, I, I, I think I got my question.
I want you, I'm going to help you answer the question a little bit.
Well, I think I got my answer.
I don't think so.
I, I got my answer.
I think you got unanswered, I don't think you have, I think you have unanswered that perhaps is not clear, because there's another part you've not considering, and that's simply...
I think I considered my question.
Well, let me tell you what, how I see it, perhaps.
Well, I think I have the floor.
But I'm still going to answer your question.
Okay, answer my question, but I didn't ask you...
I'm still going to answer your question, because I am chair of the meeting, and I have the priority to do that. So the idea would be, I think, that at some point, the city would go into partnership with the Park Conservancy in some way to do some things. Doesn't mean that, whatever that is. And if they are a partner, as they've been in the plan, and they partner with all of the events, as the city partners, as one of the partners, they would participate in all of the programs that the city participates in. So if there was a, a program that they did not have to be the recipient of, when we came in as the city, if they were our partner, they would also come in with the city and bring their muscle to bear on the project. That's an easily accomplished task. For those of us who've done nonprofit work, we do it all the time. In fact, that's how you do it, right? You bring in these partners, and when you work on a project, whatever those projects are, you and your partners all come in and bring your resources there. So that's, I think, how this would happen, although it would be specific to projects. Back to you, Mr. O'Connor.
Okay. So I have worked with the Parks Conservancy, so I know you guys do good work, I'm not arguing that. I'm just saying that if there is no matching funds, which we were promised from, from the administration, that has not come in yet, that's frustrating to me. Because right now, we should be looking at a pot of $16 million, or whatever it comes out to be, because we were told that there's going to be this magic foundation that's going to come in and give us all this money to match the tax. going to come in and give us all this money to match the tax. That has not happened. Now, maybe it will next year, when the funds come in, that's my question. Now, I know the Parks Conservancy, without the Parks Conservancy, we wouldn't have a lot of great projects in the city. So, you know, please don't take this as I'm, I'm talking about the Parks Conservancy, I'm talking about what was promised at this table that has not been put forward yet. So, that's frustrating to me, and I don't see that coming anytime soon, especially when I talk to foundations, and they're not that interested in going matching, match-for-match, dollar-for-dollar. That's frustrating. Now, the Parks Conservancy, without them, we would not have the Frick Environmental Center, and that's a great partnership, because the city put up $4 million. Jane, what did you guys raise? Another $6 million? Yeah, I mean, that, that's the type of partnership we all want to have. I totally agree. I'm asking if there's a group that gets money, that's not the Parks Conservancy, it doesn't sound like there's matching funds for them right now, and the Parks Conservancy can't answer that. I'm making a general statement, I'm not asking you to answer that. That's my whole point, is that there's not this huge lump sum of money that was promised to us at this table, that it's coming in tomorrow. That was my original point, but yeah, working with Parks Conservancy is great over the years. So, then I have a couple other questions. Obviously, we all agree, maintenance is important. There's nobody here from our budget, because we asked this question last week, and I think this is where the Parks Conservancy, when we figure out that, how we contract, you know, rehabbing these properties can really come into play, and Jane and I talked about this last week, you know, we took out a $50 million bond last couple of years, we couldn't spend half that money. That's where a partnership like the Conservancy can come in and take, you know, $10 million on playground funds, and get that project done quicker. And I think that's the partnership we have to start talking about, because we don't have the ability to spend $50 million in one year, and that's a big problem for the city of Pittsburgh. The second thing is, this report that we got, can you send that to us electronically, by any chance? Okay. So, then I have a kid's question, since I'm still the youngest member of council, and I sit in the high chair here. So, when you guys did the survey itself, I know you guys were out of Philly. So, and the reason I ask this, there's like four playgrounds that I've never seen a kid in, ever. And I think that comes down to like the open space plan, and how we can use this money for green infrastructure, and stormwater, and really help the region, and we talked about that before. But was there any calculation, like, did somebody sit at a park one day and count how many kids actually used it? Now, I mean, I went to, and I don't know if that's true or not, but when I went to the meetings, they were really good. I mean, we had one in Lincoln Place, the residents were so happy that somebody came out, you know, to talk about the park. We started maintenance on the park two years ago, again, we never finished it, still don't know why. But it's always funny, you know, a neighbor looks at the park and says, oh, you know, my kids used to, we loved the slide at that park. Well, guess what? Their kids are now in college, and nobody's using the slide anymore. So, when you guys do this study, I mean, how much is actually interacting on what the kids actually use? And I'm just looking playground equipment, I think when you get into larger parks and there's trails, that's a different, that's a different range of people. But when you actually look at what play surfaces are used, like, I can tell you, there are swings in some places that aren't used. There's two parks that, there's one, it's on its way to Oakland, it's right off the Boulevard of the Alley, I think it's called Lawn Field, or Lawn...
Lawn Street Playground.
Lawn Street Playground. Been there 20 years, we just dumped a bunch of money into it. There's yet to be a kid, unless you're a Pitt graduate, that, you know, had way too much to drink, and you're sleeping under the slide. But, but usually, there is not one kid at that park. There's also one that I have in Hays, that we could probably use, it's between where the creek overflows and where the railroad tracks are. So, no kid's ever going to go back there years ago, but we can use that as green space. So, when you looked at your study, and we did the open space study in 2013 as well, so did you calculate like usage of, now, I'm just looking at playgrounds itself. I obviously get trails, and that's a different range, but were you able to calculate that at all? Or, again, you're, you're not here, you're based out of Philly, I get that, so it's kind of hard to have a clicker of how many kids showed up, but does that factor into how we would put more funding into that? Oh, sorry, Jane, if you want to answer.
Well, I was just going to say, that gets to the piece, you know, particularly if you look at the capital projects, and even in rehab, we simply list the dollar amount, it doesn't say what amenities are going to be improved or changed. That's where going back to the community and saying, okay, you have X amount of dollars for this park, how do you want it spent? That's, that was really critical, that we didn't prescribe that, that, that we figured out what the needs of the system, and what the needs of the neighborhoods were, and allocate resources, but then to go back to those communities and let them drive how those dollars get spent, whether it's putting in a new playground, or saying, no, let's not do a playground, instead, let's do this, this is what our neighborhood needs and wants.
So, from your original meetings, and again, I was only at, I think Lincoln Place and Squirrel Hill had a big one, I don't remember, the one at McGee, I don't remember how many were there, but, so we didn't even get to the actual details of the, the plan yet.
Correct.
So, it's just a general, this park's a good one, we should rehab it, but let's talk about what that rehab might be. Got it?
Right.
Okay.
That's a lighter part of it.
That's a little easier, yeah.
And I will say, you know, so, no, we didn't, we weren't there.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah.
But having those site-by-site conversations with DPW, I mean, those guys, Tom and Joe and Justin told, like, they would be like, oh, here's who shows up on a Tuesday night, or whatever. So, I think that people who are here do have a really good sense. Some places do ask us to go in and kind of do some detailed site observations, but...
Yeah, and I think, when we met, I think it's good that, obviously, the maintenance, I think, is the biggest thing. I think we could save, you know, not only hiring people, but maintaining the parks will save us a ton of money down the road, opposed to, you know, some of them just need some love and care, opposed to a redo all the time.
Exactly.
And that's why that was number one on your priority.
And, and, you know, it is, again, this is just professional experience and knowledge that I have, that if you spend the money on maintenance, you're spending less on capital, because you're taking care of it, extending the life. Whereas if you don't, you have to do capital replacements that much sooner, because it's falling apart quicker, so, and it's the cheapest way to spend money, is on the maintenance side of things.
Yeah. All right, I think I'm good. Again, my issues are how we're going to spend, because I know we can't spend it. So, that's going to be a big detail, which is frustrating, that we're going to have all this money, and we can't spend it fast enough. And then the matching funds, how that's going to play out with other organizations that come for this funding, and obviously, I think all council members want to say at the end of the day, because we're the ones that are going to be held accountable for how this money goes out. So, I think every council member agrees that whatever the plan is, we okay it before it leaves this chamber and goes out on the street. So, those are basically all my questions, but thank you guys for being here.
Thank you very much. Ms. Cruz.
Thank you. Oh, I'm going to follow up on, I think, Councilwoman O'Connor's question about kids. So, in this chart that you have, that show the metrics of walksheds for each of the parks, it's a 10-minute walk shed. I like walksheds, I think everyone can understand that. It's like a watershed, it's literally like how big, what is the footprint of the area of the city that feeds into that park? How many of the kids in the city are included in those?
Included in the walksheds?
All of them.
Within the area of all the walksheds of all the parks.
I think, I'd have to pull that number for you.
It is not all of them.
That's correct, so the, the walksheds...
Is it 10% of them?
No, so, the percentage of kids that are within the walksheds of all the parks is...
Who's left out?
I think there are parts of the city that, that are outside of a 10-minute walk, and so it's those, those areas.
Which of those? I want that map.
And we have that?
So, again, council, we'll call that, for over a week now, I've been asking for this raw data, and not the summarized data, that's a selection of the data, it is not all the data, because otherwise, we're, you're, as I think Mr. Booker pointed out, you are parks advocates, you are advocating for the parks, and your beginning, beginning point is the park, and your ending point is the park, not the people in the city of Pittsburgh. And so, I want to see who's included and who's not included. And so, I'm not satisfied with your aggregate data aggregated by how you wanted it. I don't, I'm not impressed by the caliber of this data as presented. I do think we have a great capacity to look at it, and look at it with a different set of questions. And I, I'm not satisfied with just these references. Yes, I've heard of the American Community Survey. Yes, I've heard of the CDC. Yes, I know PWA data. I want to see the sheets that you used to aggregate them. I don't think you should be sending me to the source data of the entire United States for the American Community Survey, right? I don't, I know that you already have it pulled out for the city of Pittsburgh, but you haven't shared it yet.
Yeah, I believe I have that file in my email that I can forward immediately.
Yes, and I, it's funny, because I got a response this week from Ms. Miller, saying that it was not in a presentable email before him, because I said for a week now, I, I'm presuming that these are in a readily accessible format, that are easily emailed, and that's not the response I got. The response I got was that the raw data in its original form is not packaged and ready to circulate. But here's the link to our interactive map, which is not good enough.
I wrote that to Jane, so I think that that was the case at that moment, but...
She signed it from herself.
Well, that was information that I provided, so, but I think, you know, we, it's a tech, it's a long process, it takes a lot of steps, but so, yes, that there is data that, you know, we download from these public sources, and then we bring it into a database, so if we can just clarify what it is that you want, we can probably provide that to you, so...
Yeah, I want to see how you constructed these indices, right? You can call them metrics, you can call them whatever summary, but they're aggregations from other data sources.
So, you're requesting...
Yeah.
So, I mean...
I want to see what you added up to get to the number that you put down here on the sheet.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. We can do that.
Because as you stated, Mr., what's your last name again?
Estassi.
Estassi, did I say that right?
Yes.
Your first sentence said that the data should be replicable. That is the gold standard for academic research.
Absolutely.
Right? Someone else on the planet who is not you should start off with the same question, and end up with the same answer, and right now, we only have you. You could have made it up, and that's been known to happen.
Of course.
So, we don't want that to have happened, and we want to verify it.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have an agreement. We will get this data in a way that we can have other people who are not either one of these two people from the Philadelphia firm, who can look at the same data and see if we get the same answers, and we can ask our own questions, and see if there's a, a different set of summaries that are at least as relevant, if not more so.
Can I just request that we get it before the next post-agenda and public hearing?
Yes, please. Thank you, because you are the president of council, and I would, I appreciate that, thank you so much.
When are those?
I'm glad that you also think it's important. For example, the slides that you showed us today, which sound equitable, are that those walksheds, if you look at the people in those walksheds for your top 20 parks in the capital section of the budget, that they're 70% non-white, and that's your, that's your slideshow about equity. Are there 1,000 people in those walksheds? Because there's 300,000 people in the city of Pittsburgh, how many people are in those walksheds? That 70% of them, are that 700 people that are non-white? How many of them are non-white? You don't know. Okay, so this whole plan, this plan that prioritizes those 20 parks, how many of the people of the city of Pittsburgh are in your plan? Literally, it could be 100 people, and 70% of them are non-white. And so, I don't, I don't think it's a laudable plan that we can't reproduce, right? Until we see it ourselves. So, there's that. For example, compared to another study, which does look at the raw numbers of people across the city of Pittsburgh that the Women and Girls Foundation commissioned, done by people who live in the city of Pittsburgh, it's called the Femisphere Project, did you use their data? No. It's entirely based on Allegheny County Health Department data, and it has a map of where the poor households in the city are, right? And I could show you on my tiny screen, that won't show up on the television camera, but just eyeballing it myself, since I did not have your data over the weekend, I just eyeballed their raw map of where, you can see their heat map, based on not percentages and census tax, by the way, but raw, actual living people, right? So, not like 50% of 10 people, but, you know, 100 people, or 200 people, or 300 people, and where they live. And it does not correspond very well with your map. Where are the poor households that are, for your information, of the poor in the city of Pittsburgh, 70%, 77% according to this study, of the poor households in the city of Pittsburgh are female-headed households with children. And there are a lot of people on their map that aren't anywhere near one of your map, you know, highlighted parks, right? I can't give it to you in numbers, because I don't have your numbers yet, and that's what I'm looking forward to doing. So, there's that. So, you have a site condition, you have your highlighted map here of where your 20 top parks are, and you can see, for example, in the entire, in the capital projects, and the sites ranked 1 through 20 in investment priority, this is a very large section of the city, right? Similarly, here, south of the East End, this is a very large section of the city. There are quite a number of poor, female-headed households distributed across those half, a third, a third of the city's territory, that are not within, I'm just telling you by eyeballing it, not in a 10-minute walk shed. Right? So, different advocates, advocates around housing, advocates around poverty and equity, advocates around gender, equity, come up with different answers. Now, I respect that you're here advocating for your issue, but that doesn't mean it's everybody's issue, nor that you've included everybody in your plan. And I'll continue to ask those hard questions until we all have the same information in front of us, so that we can have the same information, conversation with each other, right? Right now, it's one-sided. You've presented a plan, and that's fine, and I told Ms. Miller this off-camera, thank you for your plan, but the public conversation starts now. It doesn't end now. And I think that's the same part, point that Councilwoman Strasberger was, was getting to as well. You know also that I am, in my spare time, reading the 55 current agreements, or 52, or however many there are, with the Parks Conservancy, and I just wanted to point out that one of the things that caught my eye was in the initial, since, I think Mr. Booker, he brought up the initial May 1998 enabling legislation, that's the cooperative agreement between the Parks Conservancy and the city of Pittsburgh. There's a strikeout here, I happen to have it, handy-dandy, thank you to my staff, where you see this underlined section 6. I haven't looked up the actual minutes of this council session, because it's not a televised one in 1998, so you can't re-watch it, I think you have to read it. That says, "The conservancy shall review parks' operations in non-RAD-funded parks," which is what we're here today to talk about, right? Which ones are not the RAD-funded parks. It says, "And offer suggestions," and that is removed. City council removed those words. So, what I'm looking at is a cooperative agreement between the city of Pittsburgh and the Pittsburgh's Parks Conservancy that says, no, you shall not offer suggestions for the non-RAD parks. But yet, today, that's exactly what you're doing. So, I'd like to not, I don't think we need to drill into that today, but I'm really curious about, are we supposed to be following this 1998 cooperative agreement, or are we not supposed to be following this 1998 cooperative agreement? And since there's a stack that started out like this with 19 in it, and now there's 33 more that have come over from the controller's office, it's a question that I've asked the city controller to look at. It was struck out and replaced with assist in improvements in capital operations, which means that the decision-making of what should happen, happens by elected members of city council. And when we want to enlist your help, then we ask for it. And so, I think I'll stop my questions there.
Thank you very much. Ms. Cogill.
Okay. So, let me, let me start from the beginning, on election night. I was looking at some of the results of some of my polls, right? I went around to about six of them, and they were just staggering to me. It was just 72, 78, 80% voted no against the tax, right? Went down to the IBW hall, we were all convening for the county executives, you know, get-together, I ran into Councilwoman O'Connor there, and the first thing I said to them, I said, wow, I said, that parks tax really took a beating, didn't it? And he said, did it? And I said, yeah, I said, of course. "Yeah," I said, "of course." Now, I take it, as usually across the city, whether it's a mayoral race, or city control, or you name it, you can pretty much get six or eight pools, and you know, it's a pattern throughout the city. Pretty much you can predict it, right? So I went down there naively predicting. I said, "You know, this thing has failed miserably." Councilman O'Connor came up to me about half, half an hour later and said, "I hear that's pretty close." And I said, "There's no way, Corey." I said, "There's no way." So my question is, why do you think that is? And I guess that's to you, Director. Why is it that my district voted so heavy against it?
I don't know. We did a bad job marketing the plan in your district, I guess. Or there's a stronger anti-tax feeling in your district, or people in your district don't care quite as much about parks as elsewhere. I don't know. It's all speculation for me.
We care about our parks, Mr. Booker, I'll say that. But I'll tell you my speculation. My speculation is it was a targeted campaign. My district has a high density of homeowners, and homeowners are being the ones levied with the tax. Why property taxes, is my other question? Why not on payroll, or why not on earned income?
It was really based on the advice we had, the only option, property tax.
Do you believe that the camp, this is a political campaign, of course. Was it targeting high-rental districts, perhaps? I mean, that's my take on it, I will tell you. I think property owners across the city didn't, weren't necessarily for this. I believe it was targeted, just as any political campaign is, and you would be, you know, remiss not to target certain areas. My district believes it was targeted. Is that the case, or not?
I don't know if Jane wants to, it was never something we articulated that we wanted to do.
So did we spend the same amount of money, say, in the East End as we did in the South Hills? On the campaign?
I don't know the answer to that.
They same mailers? Same message?
Yes, it was always the same.
Same mailers across the board. So there was nothing different from the mailers that the people received in the South Hills versus the other end of town? Is that right?
Yep, that's right.
All right, okay. How much was the total figure on the campaign? Does anybody have a raw number on that?
I think it was 8 million, 8, excuse me,
8 million?
Excuse me, 800,000. I think it was about $800,000.
800,000 dollars?
Maybe more than, maybe eight to nine.
Great, 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 great. So, when we're talking about collecting data, and this is for you, Chris and Mindy, how much did the Parks Conservancy spend on collecting data?
That number, Jane?
Yep, just give me a minute. So our, what, I can tell you what we paid Interface Studios, and they did all of the data work and more, was $55,000.
$55,000. You know what's amazing to me, Chris and Mindy, is that you collected all that data. And not one person came to me and said, "What do you feel you need in your district, Councilman?" And let me ask you this. Would you think in collecting data, it would be smart to see what the councilperson suggested for their small parks over the past couple of years? Did you look into that at all?
In the context of our conversations with DPW, certainly, we would learn, you know, this is a park that recently had, you know, some interest from the councilperson, or some things along those lines, but that was the extent.
I, if I may answer, Councilman, I had, from the time that I arrived, I had over 20 meetings with councilmembers throughout the process. Some more successfully than others in terms of getting those scheduled to keep councilmembers apprised of the process. When we also started the park listening tour, our staff reached out to every councilmember's office to find out who should we connect with, what neighborhood associations, what groups in your district should we be meeting with. So we actually did reach out to each councilperson's office multiple times to make sure that we were connecting with the right people in each council district.
So, I can't speak for the other councilmembers, but it would have been as simple for you to look at the capital budget request from the councilperson, at least in my case, okay? My first year here, I put in a request for $250,000 because we're using porta-johns at a state-of-the-art deck hockey rink that the Penguins and Highmark built for us, okay? It was embarrassing to me, okay? Out-of-town people were coming there, they're waiting in line to get in a porta-john at March, March and early April, okay? I don't know if you've ever been in a porta-john in, at March, when it's 30 degrees, but not too fun, right? So, why wasn't that collected? Why didn't you know that that was my request? And I would think that's the simplest thing, and to say, "Look, a Councilman Coghill put in this request, and I don't know if you know, did any other councilmembers put in a request for the capital budget for their small parks? Maybe I was the only one." It seems so simple to find, and we're collecting data and spending money to collect data when it's public knowledge. So, did anybody think, look at that?
Again, we worked closely with every department, DPW, Parks and Rec, Office of Management and Budget. We dealt, worked both with the capital side and the operating side of OMB to get that kind of data.
So were you aware that I put that in the capital budget, then?
I was not aware of it.
You were not aware of that. So who did you get your data from, then? I mean, first of all, that's public knowledge, Jane, okay? You know, it's, it's, it's out there. It was denied the first two years for me. I'll be putting it in again, of course, but why, why is that data so hard to collect when I requested it publicly? You know, it's, it's out there for everybody to see. I, you didn't, you didn't need to pay anybody to find that out, Jane, but. So why is it that we don't know that? I would just love to have an answer to that.
I think we don't have an answer. I don't have an answer.
Right, right. So, just so you know, I did put that in for the last two years because it was very important to my community. I'm embarrassed, as a representative of the city, that I have people waiting in line at a porta-john, and we have a facility there, and all I'm asking for was being, it to be fixed. I did put in for a capital budget request. It was denied, not one year, but both years, okay? Going back to your 20 most-at-need parks, not one of them serves, services the people in my district when I'm the one that put in the capital budget for this desperately needed restrooms. So, I can't imagine how that got by everybody. And secondly, you know, why is it that, why is it that none of these parks service my district when I put in for the capital budget request to have this done? I don't know what the other councilmembers did. I don't know if they put in requests for their small parks, but I know what I did. So, why was that not looked at and just said, "You know, simple, Mr. Coghill requested this, not myself. This was the community crying at me, saying, 'Please, can we get these restrooms fixed,' okay?" How does that escape everybody? I just don't get that. So. You don't have to answer. I don't think you have an answer for it.
It actually, I went to the event in Phillips Park.
No, not Phillips, Brookline.
I went to the event
Okay.
in Phillips Park,
Okay.
where we had the community in, which I think is in your district.
It sure is.
Would have been a great talking point for me to say to those people, "Your councilman is banging his head against the wall to get porta-johns. Help him out by voting for this."
Yeah.
Seriously, I mean
You sure would have, although Phillips Park would have fallen deaf ears, because this is in Brookline. That's, they're the people that really are on my
No, no, well.
Phillips Park is, is doing great. We're fine there.
And, and, am I right that McKinley Park is in your district?
McKinley Park is in my district. However, it doesn't serve the people from my district. I will tell you that to a T. I've asked, there's not one person in my district that uses McKinley Park. It really shouldn't even be in my district. I felt that was kind of a bone you all were throwing me, to tell you the truth, because it was in my district, but because of the lack of knowledge, I feel, that comes to this table of my district and my needs, that it never got through, that guess what? Doesn't service the people from my district. It actually services the people from Councilman Kraus's district, because the entire park is surrounded by his district. My district's on the other side of 51, and there's not actually one residential home in that area. So, you know, it's, don't get me wrong, it does lie in my district. It does. But when I speak to, you know, my district not getting its fair share, it doesn't service my district. If you could find me two people who use McKinley Park from my district, you know, that's, you'd be hard-pressed, I could tell you. So. So let me just ask you this, Jane. Whose idea was it when you came to town and said, "We should levy a tax on the city of Pittsburgh taxpayers in order to pay for our small parks"? Who, who started that? That's what I'd like to know. Whose idea?
I don't know whose idea it was.
Well, you, somebody came to you and said, right? I mean, who came to you and said, "Jane, this is what we're thinking to do"? So it wasn't your idea?
I don't know whose idea it was.
Okay. Does anybody here know whose idea it was?
That's a good question. I mean, at the board level, we, yes, I think I can say where I think it originated. We learned about the referendum effort on the drink tax in Philadelphia. We, we meaning the organization, the board. And as we did strategic thinking about, you know, how do we get more resources for parks? And what would it take for us to, in fact, double how much we raise in a 10-year span? We felt that it would make an enormous impact to, to, and we would learn what the citizens of the city want, whether they agree with us that the parks need to be improved. So I, I think it probably was born out of the board.
The board, the PPC board, which you were a member of at the time, Mr. Booker.
I was chairman.
Were you still a member there? Yeah?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So, Jane, you didn't come here, because I know you did something similar in Minneapolis, right?
No, we actually, we did an agreement with the city. The park board that I was the superintendent of was a separate local unit of government. It was not part of the city. And we negotiated an agreement with the city for 20 years for an $11 million of additional revenue from the city to the park board to address backlog in our neighborhood parks.
So it wasn't your idea? You, you didn't come here with a preconceived notion, saying, "Here's how we fix up the small parks. Let's raise taxes on its citizens in order to"
I think, to be fair, Councilman, we on the board had a strong interest in the possibility of a referendum. And we thought Jane had a background that would add credibility to that effort.
Speaking of the referendum, let's talk about that real quick. Do you all see the danger in putting a question on a ballot, a referendum, posing a question on the ballot? And as to, to me, it seems as a form of privatization. Now, as I get my county real estate tax, I just, Bill, I got it the other day. It says, "City of Pittsburgh tax." It says, you know, "Library tax." It says, you know, now it says "Parks tax," or now it's going to say "Parks tax." Now, I stress to this, to the citizens in my district, is, where will it stop? I mean, it's really privatization, is it not, in a form, or no?
No.
No? Yeah? So what's this not anybody?
Privatization, to me, is that you turn over a public asset to a private entity. And that's not happening here.
Right, right. Well, on that note, what is your role? What, what do you see your role being?
We would like to continue to do the kind of things we've been doing, but more of it.
Right. But as far as allocating money, do you find a role in that for the Parks Conservancy, because you came up with a plan? I mean, obviously, you had a plan intact, right?
No, I, in terms of allocating the money, that is entirely a political decision to be made by the administration and the council.
So why a plan, then? Why not let us come up with a plan?
With all due respect, council's been in business for a long time without ever having come up with a plan. And we were simply doing what a citizen who cares about a public issue does.
Well, at the same time, we didn't have $10 million coming as a tax money, so now we do. And I'll tell you this, I've talked to
That could be why our minority parks are not taken care of, because somebody who was responsible for parks did not take care of them with your plans. So, I'll just say that.
So I've talked to Mr. Gable about this. I have full confidence in him. So, let me just speak to you as a president of the Beechtree Athletic Association, which is dying. It's almost dead. And you know why? Because we have a concession stand that's falling to pieces. We can't even, we can't, we can't make hot dogs out of it. Many of these parents come to games because they don't have time to make dinner. They count on being there and getting a piece of pizza or a hot dog. It's in shambles, okay? And that's not my, that wasn't my capital budget request. This is another facility. I feel, I know my parks better than anybody here, better than Mike Gable, better than any of you here. I know the needs of them. I'm a contractor myself. I could walk around a park and say, "This needs done, that needs done, and this needs done." Why is it that we would need the Conservancy in order to help us identifying things when, I feel, Mr. Gable, I feel, is very, very knowledgeable with the parks, and I myself can use his opinions on what needs to be done, but he could certainly help other councilmembers. And why, why do we need the Conservancy at this point, is what my question is?
We voted on, sorry.
Yeah. We think we bring talent and advocacy and relationships with the philanthropic community to the table. Other people might do the same thing. It's, it's, do you need us? No, but should you care about us because of how we can help? Yes, you should.
Sure. I do care about you, and, and I do feel you can help in many ways. And the director and I talked about that in executing contracts and doing the paperwork, basically, I feel. The director didn't seem to be too interested in that. So, you know, the fear for me, let me tell you the fear for me, is that this money does not stay in the public's hands, in the way of, the board is, or something is created, and I don't know what the Conservancy's plan is. Nobody has offered me anything, or the administration, to tell you the truth. So, I came up with my own plan, and, you know, it was ridiculed and dragged through the coals, but it's still the best plan on the table, I think. I haven't seen a plan from the Conservancy. I haven't seen a plan from, you know, the mayor's office, not one that sits well with me, I could tell you. To say that the data that you all collected, and that my park with, that I put in for capital budget request with the, with the outhouses are not on that, is insulting to the people in my district.
Fund, I just want to say, absolutely, you know, we don't mean to insult anybody, and I just wanted to make one point of clarification, which is that the way the city capital budget is right now, the capital dollars include what this plan describes as capital and rehab. And so, restrooms, like, would be a line item in, under rehab, or the concession stand. Those are not the day-to-day maintenance stuff, but it is things that exist and that maybe have fallen into disrepair and need a boost. So I think that there is the, the capital budget piece of the program, which has the, you know, the rank-order list, and it doesn't get that far down the list because of the amount of resources that we're working with, and we could get further down the list if, you know, the philanthropic match comes through, or whatever. But I just wanted to kind of clarify that those, the rest of the money is, the 25% of the budget that is for rehab, that could touch parks in, across the city, and that those dollars could go to concession stands and restrooms and so forth. So,
So, so
And there, there is no list, sorry, so.
No, it's okay. So, so it's not, it wasn't a rehab. This was a capital budget request of mine. I wanted to redo the building behind it, and included in that, I harp on the restrooms, because that's the most pressing thing, but there's a building there that's not utilized. This is a great project. The Penguins are on board. Everybody wants to see it happen. They know it's an embarrassment, it's an embarrassment to them, I could tell you. I talked to David Morehouse, okay? It's an embarrassment, you know, that people have to come to their deck up when they have Pittsburgh Penguins on it, and they have Highmark all over it. Yet, they have to wait at a, at a, you know, porta-john. So, I'll, sure, Chris.
Just a very small thing, just a small point of clarification that can cause a little confusion. In the plan, the thing, the word "capital budget" that we use is meant to refer to these large transformational investments in parks in which the entire park might be reimagined. And these rehab items are meant to talk about sort of piecemeal improvements. Whereas, in the city budget, what we refer to as a capital budget item has a slightly different definition. So, it would, just to sort of clarify also what Mindy was saying, these other items, which, for which there is no list, and for which urgency is one of the defining factors of how those funds should be spent for rehab, might include items that in the capital budget are technic, that in the existing budget are labeled capital items. I understand that's, those, the definitions are a little strange.
So, Chris, the people in my district, what they see as our park and my project that I put in for and kind of begged for, is not getting done. And what they see is the 20 parks that you all came up with the data for to take care of first. And what they think is, it may, we may never, we're going to be in those urinals for, I'm sorry, not urinals, we're going to be in those outhouses forever. That's the way they feel. And we have no reassurance from your plan. Your plan, to me, just is, you know, unacceptable to me, you know? That's why I fight for equal distribution and for that councilperson to be equitable. This way, I know my projects that are so pressing, and I feel I know the projects in my parks better than any councilperson here, okay? Because I grew up on those fields, I'm the president of the Beechtree Athletic Association, I attend everything there. You know, it's, sports kind of was my life and my education.
Back it up there, Coghill, back it up. Just going to say, you're going down the river.
As well as any other councilperson.
We've got to get you to those bathrooms.
Thank you. Thank you.
I sat in the meeting, and the administration did tell me, they're on their list.
Well, the bathrooms were, but that's not the request. It was a capital budget request to redo the facility, which I found matching money for, by the way, okay? Outside of the Conservancy. So, let me just ask you, this is for you, Mr. Levine. Do you find a problem with the question that was posed on the ballot about matching funds? Was it misleading?
No, not at all. It was a mechanism to try to encourage. It's, it's, it's very frequently the situation that there'd be money available in a described pool, and they have a track record of 25 years of trying to obtain matching funds. And, and again, a lot, all the, the comments that we heard today are very constructive. I'm really, honestly, they're very constructive, but there's the opportunity to reach out beyond just city council. And, you know, it's funny that you say And, you know, it's funny that you say, I'm sitting here listening to this, and I have to say, and I think Councilman Smith knows my wife, and you're in my district, or my old district, Highland Park. There, the playgrounds in this city were deplorable. When my kids were little, a group of parents in Highland Park decided, you know what? They're going to build the super playground. There was no city money. They went out and they solicited people, they solicited money, they raised money, they raised about $350,000, and in five days, that park got built. Jim Furlough was the city councilman in those days. And to be honest with you, it was very difficult dealing with the city. That was Mayor Maslov. They didn't want to take ownership, they didn't want to take maintenance, we had to set up a whole maintenance fund. And that super playground got built, and it transformed the city, because then Dan Cone sponsored legislation to improve city parks route, and Bill Pudido was his assistant then, and they improved parks route. But that transformation did not come out of city council, did not come out of the mayor's office. It came out of a lot of people, like Mr. Booker and others, who really want to do good, who love the city. And what you're saying about the sports, I was involved with coaching soccer for years, I totally get frustrated, why don't we build more fields? We helped build the Shenley Plaza, or not Shenley Plaza, the AstroTurf Field up in the Oval. And that took a lot of work, just exactly what you're saying. So I think that there's a, an ability here for us to work together so that you have your controls, but there's obviously sources of funds that we can tap, that people want to see focused projects sometimes. They don't want to just throw money in a general pool. And so I think the idea was exactly well-founded, I think it was accurate, it's exactly what we want to do. And I think the comments you make, you know, do we define a region, a park as a 10, 10-minute walk? Does that exclude people? These are really legitimate questions, what role do you have? These are all really legitimate questions about how we structure the plan. But the idea that all these groups and all these foundations and all these nonprofit and all these other people and all these just average citizens can't help and contribute, that's the matching part of money and energy. So I think it was accurate.
So I want to say this to that. In my district, I can't speak for other council members, but to a T, everybody who voted for that tax felt like there was going to be an automatic matching funds. Meaning, you know, if you put in a dollar, we're going to get a dollar back for, per district. That's, that's what they thought. To me, that question was misleading, at the very least. And as far as the matching funds go, I don't think there are any matching funds. I mean, maybe to be so, but, and in this case, why even put it on the ballot? Of course we can go out and find matching funds. Why put that question on the ballot, Jane? Why was the question there?
To, again, demonstrate the work that the Conservancy has done and is committed to, to raising additional resources, to expand the dollars that would come, not only from tax dollars, but from private fundraising that, that has been the history of the Conservancy for 24 years.
As are many foundations, and we can partner with any Conservancy, as the question is posed on the ballot. I just feel that that question was on the ballot to mislead people that there's going to be automatic matching funds. That's what people read into it, I will tell you that. I had my own council look at it, and he thinks there's a case to be made there, I could tell you. Not that I'm trying to get it thrown out, but Director, you said to me at one point, I will be happy in 10 years that this tax was imposed. I agree with that, but only if those funds come back to my district, period. At your current plan, when you have 20 parks ahead of mine, you know what? We don't, I don't feel like we'll see that for years and years to come, for the capital projects that I know personally that we need, the ones that I put in for with the City of Pittsburgh. When's it going to come back to my district? When is that $250,000 capital project that I put in for, and probably the only council member that put in for a capital budget project and for their small parks, long before you impose this tax? When is it coming back to us? That should be immediate for me. And that's all I have to say. Thank you all for being here. I'm very passionate about this. I have to protect my district. They voted 75% against this because they didn't trust those funds would come back to the district. And I think they don't trust them, and we see the, the top 20 parks, for good reason, they don't trust it, because they don't see that money coming back to my district. I'm here to make sure that money comes back to my district, and I'd like to ask you for that $250,000 in the first year to put that in as part of your plan. It just makes sense, right? Does it not?
You know, it's interesting, I, a group in town that really cares about athletic is Pump, right?
A contributor to the campaign, I know.
Well, it's my point. I, and to go to an earlier question that was raised, the Parks Conservancy doesn't regard itself as having any kind of monopoly. We can't do anything without an agreement that's approved by the city councils. So, you know, we think we have something to offer, and it brings value and, you know, but you ultimately decide that. But if the, to the, to the question, are we the only ones who are in a position to help raise matching funds? The answer is, no, we're not the only. We think we may be the best and able to raise the most, but we're, we're not purporting to put ourselves out to the exclusion of other people.
I do believe that question was put on that ballot to entice people to vote for it, the matching funds question. Why, I feel it has no business. Of course we can go for matching funds. We don't need that on the ballot. Why do we need that on the ballot? I, I'd love an answer for that. Other than, Jane, you saying, you know, you want to show what you bring to the table. Doesn't anybody bring that to the table? I can go to anybody for matching funds, as long as I have the funds, and that's the taxpayer money. I'm done.
So, I've not chatted yet. First of all, I do want to thank all the council people for coming. I do want to thank the Parks Conservancy. I'm going to go down a couple of roads. First, as sort of the elder statesman of council.
Make sure you point out your elders.
I want to, I want to at least explain some perhaps slight misconceptions. If you would, this slides up if you can, if it's possible. This is a slide I want you to pull up, please. So I think there are three things, and I just want to sort of help. First of all, Mr. Clark Hill, they could not see your budget request. It is not public to, to them.
I made that very publicly. They could have, they could have inquired, they could have saw, they could have known about it, that they asked.
I'm just saying, the, the, the council, you said council budget request that we give to the administration is not privy to, it's a private conversation. Having led that process over the last two years, the, you could talk about it, but they would not have access to it. All of us, they could not, they would not have access, I'm just saying in general, this, I'm not, they would not have access to it, number one. Number two, just in terms of terms, I'm, I'm not taking a stance yet, but if you see the distribution of dollars, most of the money goes into maintenance and rehabilitation. I only know about the bathrooms, I don't, I'm not, I'm not talking about overall construction, but certainly within that 73% of dollars that council will control, because most of the maintenance and projects will probably be in public works, we could easily take care of many of the small projects in our district. The capital project, in this, as the researcher began telling you, is sort of different than the capital projects, the capital line in our budget. It's not exactly the same, it's just similar. The last thing I'm going to say, and this is just for me, I, I just find it curious, but I would be careful with talking about legal stuff when Cliff Levine's at the table. It has, it has come to, in my experience, having done, having done with, having, this is just, I want to say this personally, I have not met a better lawyer. I have not met one who is more passionate about this city. I have not met a better advocate for everything that's good at our city. And understanding politics to Mr. Levine and, Mr. Levine and I, if he wrote this, I would be very hesitant. I would, just, I'm just, I'm just telling you, from my experience, I would be very, him and I have conversations about what we think, right? And although, and I'll, I talk to him, I don't, I'm a layman when it comes to law, and I'll ask him, and they usually tell me, right? But I, I would be very hesitant to suggest that I have a contrary, just my own experience, having been here a long time, I don't, going down that road will not probably be fruitful. However, so let me go to, let me go to a couple of questions.
Thank you.
Let me go to my stuff, okay? So, I want to ask some, just, I want, I want to take the overall view, and then, I brought you here so we could have the public conversation, right? That's my intent. My intent is not where the dollars go. I made that clear. I haven't, that's not my interest. With, I'll do that as a member of council. I brought you here to have the conversation, because we're talking about the parks tax, right? We're talking about the trust fund, and the people voted for the park tax based on the park, based on this plan. For good or for bad, that's why they voted. We said, vote for this, we're going to do this. I'm saying, have said simply that, if this is what we did, and most of the people voted for it, which they did, based on this plan, which they did, then we should follow the plan. And so I'm going to stay consistent with that. But now I'm going to go over, I want to talk about something bigger than this, and that's the status quo. Right now, most of the money we raise has been raised, you said, by the Parks Conservatory, and probably a lot of the money we spend on parks go to the rad parks disproportionately, correct?
Yes, we think so.
Right now, most of the money we spend on parks go to the rad parks, right? Right now, most of the money we spend go to the rad parks. Where are those rad, where are those city rad parks? Where are they? What are the names of them? There are five of them, right?
Riverside, Shenley, Frick, excuse me, River View, Shenley, Frick, Highland, and Emerald View Park.
Where's Emerald Park?
Emerald View?
Yeah, where's Emerald View at?
My district.
Where's it at? Where's it at? It's where?
Mount Washington.
Mount Washington. And can the people from, let's say, Mount Washington, people from Belsuver, is that a 10-minute walk for them? From...
Actually, the door of it is in the...
I'm just, I'm just asking the, I'm just, I'm just asking, okay?
The entrance is in the...
So, but I would think the most of the park is not situated in primarily in African-American communities. Is that, is that fair to say?
So can I say, it's in a CDBG eligible area?
But is it, is, but it is, most of it is not.
It's a poor community.
Most of it is not, most of it does not, I'm just suggesting, I'm just saying, right?
Most of it's in the poor community.
Most of, most of it does not exist in access to an African-American community, I bet. Number two, Frick Park. Where's Frick Park at? Okay, I'll give you, how about this? I'll give you Emerald Park. That's fine. I'll give you one, I'll give you one of the five. Let's have the conversation, one of the five, all right? Where's, where's Frick Park at?
Yeah, Squirrel Hill, Point Breeze.
Where's it at?
Squirrel Hill and Point Breeze.
Is it in walking, is it 10-minute walk?
Region Square.
Is it, is it 10-minute walk from Homewood?
No.
Is it a, is it a 10-minute walk from East Hills? Is it a 10-minute walk from Lomer? Is it a 10-minute walk from Lincoln Leamington? It is in probably one of the wealthier areas in the City of Pittsburgh. Yes? It's probably in one of the most segregated communities in the City of Pittsburgh. All right, let's look at Highland Park. Where's Highland Park at?
Highland Park.
Where's Highland Park at?
East Liberty.
It is not East Liberty. Where's Highland? It's in Highland Park, right? Is Highland Park a 10-minute walk? Well, maybe, parts of it. Part of it, part of it, 10 of it, part of it is.
I live in Highland Park, and Highland Park is a very large African-American...
I know, I know. I used to walk to that, with that twinkle, right? I know it's that. All right, so, you know, a little bit. And so where's Shelley Park at?
Oakland and Squirrel Hill.
Oakland and Squirrel Hill, hmm. So I'm going to suggest to you, right now, for the most part, and we can, you know, at least three out of the five, but if we really looked at the dollars, right now we're spending, they are not being spent equitably. Which, let me just make that, because, because, no, let me, the things I meant to ask you before, are parks indicators, I think we talked before about this, Jane, aren't parks indicators of the quality of life?
Absolutely.
Aren't parks, aren't parks related to property values?
Yes.
So let me get this straight. So parks are indicators of the quality of life. More park space, higher quality of life, right? More park space, higher property values, right?
Yep.
All right, cool. So then, so then, probably, I don't know, let's take a wild guess. Who would, just, just guess, who do you think has the least amount of park acreage? What council district has the least amount of park acreage? I wonder where that could be.
Council Strasburgers.
That's because, that's right, they moved her. Who's next? After, after Strasburger, guess who it is?
Is it Lavelle?
Uh-uh.
You?
Bingo, right? And the only reason hers has less is because they, because her population has gotten so big, they, it's concentrated, right? After that, it's me, right? And most of those parks have not been invested in, in a long, long, long time. Long time, right? Long time, right? And that's, that's consistent with the data, right? If you have good parks, your properties go up, your quality of life go up. So, so, in this chart, 70% of this, no, 70, 70, how's my math? It's 78%, 78% of the dollars. This one, this one, and this one go citywide. Everybody gets a share of it, right? Everybody gets a share of $78. It goes to Mr. Clark Hill's district, it goes to Bobby Wilson's district, it goes to Teresa Smellkill, it goes to everybody. Yes? Yes. But unfortunately, we start saying, you said the wrong word, equitable. So you said that this little bit of, now, we're spending all this money, not just the 40 million, but the rad dollars, the 180, 180 million over 20, whatever that number is?
Yeah, I'd say total rad dollars into the city have been 4.6 million times, yeah, it's in the neighborhood of 125.
Yeah, we've been spending all these 125 million dollars, plus probably half of the city money on these rad parks that are in, I don't know, Squirrel Hill, in Oakland, and, and affluent areas. We have disproportionately, for about 30 years, done that. But now, we're going to take 22% of the dollars of the 10 million, not, not 22% of all the money we spent, but 22% of the additional dollars we spent, which is 4 million, of the, of the, you know, 80 million we spent, and there's no conversation about being equitable, and we know that money's not spent equitably. But unfortunately, because you dare to say, for this small portion of money, we're going to look at it equitable. I'm not saying, I'm not saying that this is how people think. I'm saying that if I was a person who didn't want equitable stuff, this would be the worst thing I've ever seen. But how dare you take a small fraction of the money that the city allocates every year and not, and, and give it to the people most in need? How dare you do that? How dare you decide to help the needy and not the greedy? How dare you not do this so that those of us who have been getting money year after 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 year, why should we be deprived of taking all of the money? Why can't you just leave, you know, the parks in Homewood and disgrace, leave them like that? Why should you do that? Why should you improve the quality of those lives? Why should we do this equitably? Now, that's really sometimes how I've heard this argument, right? We, we, we know we are, the status quo isn't equitable, and we're not saying, although we'll try to do with all of it, maintenance rehabilitation, we'll try to be equitable, but we really be honest with you, we got to do the whole city. So if there's a broken fountain, we got to break, we got to, we got to fix the fountain wherever it's broken now. If there's a, if there's a grass to be cut, we got to cut the grass everywhere. And Public Works is going to do that. And Public Works is going to do that. I know Mike Gable, he's my friend, that's what he's absolutely going to do, right? But for this little bit of money, this 4 million dollars, you propose to take this little bit of the 10 million and do it equitably? How dare you? How could you possibly do that? And that's what's wrong with the city of Pittsburgh. That's the status quo. That's why places that I represent are exactly the way they are now. It's course for the last 30, 40, 50 years, every time there was a decision made, it was never equitable and they kept telling them to wait their turn. When I first came to council, 12 years ago, I began this conversation because, guess what? I received the least amount of city services of any council district in the city of Pittsburgh. The least amount of plowing, the least amount of asphalt, the least amount of grass cutting, the least amount of city services. And so I began to do the data, right? Let's look at the CDB dollars, how they spend the CDB dollars. Some of your staff was here doing those conversations, right? And I wrote legislation and said, you can't do this anymore, you can no longer supply it. What they were doing is they were taking CDB dollars and they were putting it in poor communities and they were taking the rest of city dollars and putting it in all the other communities, where CDB dollars are supposed to be on top of the equal distribution. And then we brought in San Diego and we began that argument. I've been doing this equity thing since I came on council. This is not, not, not because to favor any people. That is not my vision, that's not my goal. I want all of Pittsburgh to be great. That's my goal. I want all of Pittsburgh to be great. But we are not great now because we have the haves and the have-nots. And until the have-nots have some, we can't be great. So, my, so, 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 let me stop being sarcastic. And let me stop being a little sarcastic, because that's how I hear this argument. Really, that's really the argument. It's the argument that they don't like the diversity, not, not everybody, but some people don't like the idea that we're going to do this equitably. And so then, they're going to come after your data, they're going to come after everything they can throw against the wall because they heard equity and say, oh my God, you want to do it equitably? We can't do it equitably? We have never done it equitably. We haven't been doing it equitably for 50 years and it's worked out pretty good for us now. So, now you want to do it equitably and you want to help these poor people, shame on the process, shame on the data, shame on all this stuff. That's really what we're, that's the conversation we're having. And I'm going to say it publicly because it's obvious that's what we're having and it's not right. And that's what's wrong with this city. But as long as I'm alive and breathing and I have at least four more years, three years, three years and 10 months, I'm going to have this conversation because I, I'm not dumb, not smartest guy in the world, but I can read data. I know, and I can count to 10. And I know this is a little bit of money, a small price to pay for 50, 60, 70, 80, 90, 100 years of this investment. Because when I wanted to go someplace, I had to walk to Highland Park. I had to walk to Frick Park because it wasn't in my community. I had to walk and it wasn't a 10-minute walk. I'm from here, I know how this works. So, I'm going to continue to have the conversation, sometimes passionately, sometimes not passionately. I'll have the discussion. Now, the way I think this would work, and then I'm going to stop, is this, if we pass this plan, this plan becomes the foundation of how we go forward. All these liars, council still has to decide, right? It has to do an annual plan of, we do a five-year plan, even if this was our plan, every year we'd have to come up and say, this is kind of our priorities and these are the projects and this is how we see it. You would then, if you were our partner, you would say, these are the parts of this that we're interested in and we're going to raise money and we're going to, you know, we're going to make, we're going to build a new shelter in, in Westinghouse Park near my house, right? Which I've been interested in for 10 years, right? I hadn't talked about it, but I'm really interested in that and, and name it after George Westinghouse, right, when he lived there. And we're going to go to Billmore and whatever the, and you're going to be our partner and help us raise the money and do it together. That's kind of what I think. And council's power is going to be, as it always is, in the annual distribution of those funds. That's not your job, that's our job. But I'm going to argue that this plan is, and, and, so, if we don't want to accept this plan, that's, that's fine, then show me your data. Show me your outreach. Show me your questionnaires. Show me all of your years of doing the research and this, if, if we're not going to use, in, if we're not going to use this, we got to use something. Even with, even using this as a guide, we still can change and alter it. I'm saying, let's use this as a guide. Let's begin with this well thought out, this community-driven process. Let's use you guys as partners and figure out how to get to the end. I think at the end though, everybody, and I, and I, I'm being sarcastic, but I, and I've been saving it for, for many weeks, but let me tell you what I really think. Everybody gets blessed. That's what I have, that's what I've learned in my years of politics. I have learned that when you do the right thing, everybody gets blessed, right, right? Because to be honest with you, Mr. Levine, I raise my kids in that super park. I take my nephews to that super park every summer, right? They're little and I take them there. That when you do the right thing for the right reason, its impact is greater than you think. If we do this right thing for the right reasons, everybody, all communities and all parks, I think, will be blessed. I will end with that. Any, any final conversations?
Rev, I just, like one final.
Teresa first and then back to online.
So, I'm just going to be very, well, it probably won't be too brief, but it was going to be, but now that you made a lot of comments, I have to first say Grandview Park is, the entrance to Grandview Park is in Arlington. So, when you're talking about our side of town, please look because our area has been disinvested in, in many decades and you know that.
Yes, I agree.
So, but we do pay, southwest of Pittsburgh, we do pay the bulk of taxes in the city of Pittsburgh. So, for us to get nothing and for our, our tax dollars, we absolutely are going to advocate that our residents of all races and of all economic backgrounds receive something for their dollars as well. And so I just want to, I want to make sure that's clear. But I also want to say that you're talking about rad dollars, you're not talking about the tax dollars. And so those rad parks have been around for many years and this is the, you know, this decade, I think, was the first time since, you know, that some, a park southwest of the river was identified as a rad park when Grandview, when Emerald View Park was created. And, you know, there's poor folks in all parts of the city and, and so when we talk about making sure things are fair and equitable, I want to make sure that we understand that that happens across the city of Pittsburgh. There are CDBG eligible areas across the city of Pittsburgh and we all want to see something. We're all here to advocate for our areas. I advocated many times for Grandview Avenue to be included in the Emerald View Park situation because it is in the agreement. So, that's a big issue for me. But I'm going to say that when we're, I asked for you and Councilman Coghill to sit down and meet with the administration. And instead of doing that, we decide, we're going to have different post-agendas, we're going to have different public hearings, we're going to have different plans, we're going to go down this road publicly. So, I'm going to schedule a meeting and say, not one more thing's going to happen on this tax until we sit down together with the administration, who's willing to work with us and willing to make sure everybody gets a piece of the pie and making sure that, you know, that their plan is going forward and they want this to go forward and they do realize there are a lot of votes over here that are ready to stop it if we don't, if we're not satisfied with, with what happens here. So, I think they realize not only that, but they, this already passed. I mean, if it were me, I've said it a million times, I would not have done this, I wouldn't have done it this way. It wasn't that I didn't want something done with our parks. I always want to see more money invested in our parks and in our city in general. I want to see money invested in our schools, I want to see money invested in our public safety. There's a lot of things I want. That doesn't mean I can have everything. I also want to be the Queen of England. You don't see that happening. But, you know, sometimes we have to make our sacrifices and so, for me, now that it has passed, it's time for us to sit down, work together like adults and try to come up with something that the entire city can benefit from and, and be more supportive. Something our constituents who voted against it can say, okay, maybe this wasn't so, so bad. And something that your constituents who have felt forgotten. And we sat back here rather many times, you know, we vote for a lot of things for your district.
Yes.
A lot of money goes into your district. You may not see it in tax dollars for parks, but you do see it for investment for, for housing, a lot. And this council supports that every time because we do understand it and value that, that you need investment in your area as well. But we do too and we want to see our neighborhoods that are stable remain stable. So, with that said, I'm just going to say, not, nothing's going to go forward. I'm scheduling the meeting with the administration. We'll sit down, we'll work with them, we'll bring the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy in when it's time. We will have an absolute public process so that people can have some input and what they'd like to see happen. And we're going to make sure we advocate for those restrooms in Anthony Coghill's district, which I heard the administration promised already and said that they're working on it. There was a back order or something happened, so they, they are working on it and they are committed to doing that in your area. So, I just want to say, all this nonsense, all this fighting, we're making council look bad and, and, and there's no reason for it. We should have sat down and had the meeting and, and worked through these concerns and that's what we're going to do from, from this point forward. I'm scheduling the meeting. So, that's it for me. Thank you all for being here.
All right, round two. I won't be that long-winded, I think.
Was I long-winded?
No, I wasn't even talking about you. Let me clarify. But, that said, when you were talking earlier, I said, we voted. What I meant is, we voted to have this cable cast public hearing to talk about the resolution adopting plan submitted to the electors of the city of Pittsburgh entitled Restoring Pittsburgh Parks and the Parks Plan collectively. So, like, we're here to talk about the Parks Plan. We could have talked about Councilman Coghill's plan originally that was introduced at the turn of the year and I think Councilwoman Deb Gross was, was a co-sponsor. And we could have had that opportunity and we could have talked about, you know, maybe the lack of communication prior to that being displayed as well and where the money came from paid for that consulting. We could have talked about that. But now we're here talking about all the work that you all put in. And I'm glad to be at the table to understand how we're looking at the data and also to, you know, hear others, how they want you to bring back other mountains of data. Quite frankly, it's unfortunate that the lens isn't turned on us for the 46 million dollars that we spend and we're actually judging you all on the money that will be spent on some of these capital projects. That is, you know, less than, I mean, 46, you know, we're talking about almost 5% of, you know, what you're planning to do. But you're willing to bring up everyone else at the same with those other three, you know, maintenance, rehabilitation and, and programming. Then, I mean, I think we should probably look at that, maybe I should ask the question, is how equitable will that be? That part? Those three, if we parse out the capital projects?
So, if you take out capital and looking at maintenance, maintenance is also being distributed equitably. The idea and intent is, is that every park, we look at the high, what the public told us were the most important maintenance practices, focusing on those first and ensuring that the service level in Frick Park is the same service level that's in McKinley Park or in the West End Park, that every park where we're improving the maintenance practices has the same level of service. So, in my mind, that's equity and that's not happening today. Rehab is going to be a little different from the standpoint that rehab, we have a 400 million minimum capital backlog across the system that's going to take years to address. We've got to take the assets that are in the worst condition that are not going to get capital improvements and what I will call duct tape or patch them so that they can function, they can be safe and operational until we can get in years later and do a capital project. So, again, to me, that's also equitable in a different way. And programming, the same thing. Where are the needs? Where kids need safe places to go in parks for programming and services for those kids?
Thanks. And I've been here not even two months yet and this is the most robust plan that I've seen so far. We just voted on the, well, we were talking about the Housing Retune Fund, we, with securing bonds, we're talking a lot of money. Actually, the Housing Retune Fund is a similar, you know, similar amount that we're talking about. And, I mean, the idea of that is really, the whole plan is equity there. I mean, the whole plan is to bring others up to think about the person who has the least and how they fit into our, our current system. But I look at this plan and I've reviewed it. You just reviewed, you know, all the 70 slides that you went through. I mean, I'm, you know, I'm proud of what the council is doing now and really having the tough conversation about, you know, what does equity mean? How does that, how does that fit into when you bring data to, you know, how does that look like in terms of data? We can go back to the mountains of data, you can bring it, you can please copy me on those emails if you'd like. But quite frankly, I'd like to start moving forward. I would like to start moving forward and having conversations about how we can start doing these projects. You know, we're going to have to implement the tax or we're going to have to, I mean, the will of the voters was to implement the tax. So, if we move forward with that, you know, I mean, we need to do what's required so that we feel that, that equity, that's only going to be a small part of the actual total budget. And the 46 million dollars that's currently spent and what we can spend in the future, I would love to work with you to get those bathrooms. Because, you know, I want to start talking about other, other issues that really are affecting like all of the city of Pittsburgh. And that's what I really enjoy about the conversation, when we start talking about where are these parks? Because we're actually talking about all the city of Pittsburgh. The city limits are small. My family and I travel all over the city just to go to a park. I have three young children. We go outside the city to the parks. We see some of the, you know, the challenges of people who wouldn't have the type of transportation to get out and enjoy the different parks that we can, that my family can. And we should bring all that to the city of Pittsburgh. And I would like to see more investment than, you know, I'm, I'm looking forward to those matching dollars. You know, thank you for your past investments and I'm looking forward to what the, the future investment looks like as well. And so I, I appreciate your time. I want to be a partner for you, but I want to be a partner for you and how we can really work together so that we're, you know, that we're bringing these parts of the city together, everyone's enjoying the parks. You know, I'm looking forward to, to the future conversations of how we're going to make the bank account and really make this happen, okay? All right, thank you for your time.
So, I just want to close by saying, you're talking about the rad parks, Rev. It's like a two-day train trip for, from my district to get to the nearest rad park. So, we have absolutely no access to rad parks in my district. We wish we had one. I mean, I, I think they're beautiful. And I do think, Jane, you do a beautiful job there, you know? And I don't mean to come here in a hostile way. I'm very passionate about this tax, okay? Has, does not reflect on the, the job I feel that you are doing, okay? I know your background, I know you bring big skills to the table and we, we look forward to utilizing those. But, you want to hear something funny? I argue for equal distribution, right? And I'm not getting a whole lot of traction with council members. I get a ton of comp, a ton of comments from across the city, not just my district, who feel that's the only and the best way to do it. But, if I can't get it that way, and I often think, I'm fighting the wrong fight. I can equally fight for equitable distribution because, and I'll tell you why. If you pull the figures, since I've been in office, three years now, right? My parks have had the least amount of investment. I think a million 300,000 compared to your district, Rev, was six, six or seven million dollars in parks, okay? So, if you want to talk equitable, I want to talk equitable too. If I have to do a 360, I think I might benefit more from that argument, honestly.